Meeting the Town Council for Thursday, June, January 9th, June. Boy, I'm wishing already. To order, if you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Just coming back from Florida where it was a little bit warmer than here, my mind is still a little rattled. So I apologize for that slip. Where have we had announcements? Announcements. Of which I have very few. Upcoming Town Council, Town Hall offices will be closed on Monday, January 20th for the observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Upcoming Town Council meetings Wednesday, January 15th. At 6:30 here in the Matthew Thornton Room will be a budget meeting. January 16th, budget meeting. Snow day if necessary on the, at 6:30. And then Wednesday, January 22nd, a budget meeting at 6:30 here. And then Thursday, January 23rd, a regular council meeting at 7 o'clock here in the Matthew Thornton Room. And then snow dates for Wednesday, the 29th and Thursday, the 30th would be budget meetings to finalize the budget. If all goes to hacking a handbasket and we have too much snow to deal with, so.
And just a quick point of order, we had budget last night and one of the things that was decided was that we're going to be meeting at 6:30 on the 23rd before our council meeting to discuss the fire department's budget. I know that's not in your announcements, but the council had decided that we would be meeting on that particular day to discuss the fire department's budget.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Eileen, do you have anything to add to the announcements? Take your time. Or give it to Lon, he can do it.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Absentee ballots for the February 11th presidential primary are available. Details can be found on the town's website. Registrations for summer camp sessions at Nattica Day Camp and Camp Trek Teen programs for the summer of 2020 will be opening up on Monday, January 13th. For complete detail, visit the Parks and Rec Department website at www.maramackparkswithnsnrec.org or by calling 603-882-1046. Thank you.
Any questions or comments relative to the announcements? Yes.
Are we going to meet with Lynn Christensen, the moderator regarding the setup for the primary and everything? Is that as far as voting precincts and so forth? Is that, do we look at a change because?
I don't think we're changing anything.
Yeah, she's gonna still say the same setup, okay.
The whole idea was that we'd stay exactly the way we were for all the elections.
Okay.
If, if she would like to come, we'll reach out to her and see if she'd like to come and talk to us and make sure there's nothing special that we need to do.
I'd imagine it's gonna be a heavy turnout because of the national implications and everything.
Okay. Can, can we reach out to Lynn and invite her to the next meeting if she wants to? If she, if she needs to go over things with us. Great. Good, thank you, Peter. Appreciate it. We good? Just, just checking. I don't tend to look this way often enough, so. It's the curse of the chair, I guess, I don't know, something like that. Recognitions, resignations and retirements. We, we would like to recognize the retirement of town employees. Though did I check that off without doing it? Dang it. Comments from the press and public. Thank you. I wish. Anybody that wishes to address the council at this time on agenda items or specific issues? You're welcome to do so at this point. Seen a great rush to the mic. Thank you, Bill. Made me look like any, oh, okay. We want to recognize the, present an award to the Assistant Fire Chief Richard Pearson in recognition of his retirement after 29 years of full-time service with the Town of Merrimack Fire Department. He will be awarded with a Boston Rocker. Assistant Fire Chief Pearson retired on November 15th of 2019. We kept holding off trying to see if he could make it back to town to, to receive that recognition. My understanding is he's not gonna be able to make it back, but we will get the rocker to him. And if anybody has any comments they'd like to add about Chief Pearson, that would be awesome.
I'd like to share, one, I wish Rich were here, but I, I think he's gonna be missed. Rich was a really sharp individual. He, he knew his trade. And the, the thing about it was Rich was great to get along with, a people person. You know, I'm sure there are other folks moving up the ladder that are gonna do a good job, but Rich did an outstanding job. I worked with him on some things and it was a pleasure working with him, so I wish him luck.
Yeah, I'm sure he will be missed. Anybody, anybody else? Steve's not here, right? Eileen?
What I wanted to say about him was that he, and it sounds like an obituary or something, but he still is, I'm sure. A really good person, as, as Counselor Albert has said, a really good person as part, as kind of like the fit of the administration. So, you know, you have, you have a hierarchical, hierarchical system. And he was a, he was a firefighter's assistant chief, so, meaning he had actually rubbed shoulders with the guys at a fire or, you know, was, was doing all those kinds of things. And that was his life. So, he just, he had an awful lot of good respect, as did Assistant Chief Warman. And that is, that is something that is, is missed. And we hope to continue to, to establish that, you know, that relationship. But he was, you know, I mean, people could just go in his office and talk and he wasn't, he was very approachable and, and extremely knowledgeable. You know, any kind of project that he was given, he did a really good thorough job. And we could always expect that, that whatever it was, it was always in the best interest of the taxpayers and, and the safety of his guys. So, he, he will certainly be missed.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So, Rich Pearson will, will miss you, but we wish you well in your endeavors. We have no appointments this evening, nor public hearings planned. Legislative updates from state reps? You guys wanna come up and let us know what's happened? Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Do you have a preference on who speaks first?
No, I don't, but you grabbed the mic first, so go for it.
Oh, okay. Well, this was our calendar this week and I'm, I'm not gonna go through the whole thing and go over every bill, so I see a sigh of relief. There were three bills that we got a lot of emails about, so I was gonna talk about those. So I'm gonna start with the Red Flag Bill, it's House Bill 687-FN, which means it has a fiscal note. It went to the floor without recommendation because the committee couldn't, couldn't decide one way or the other. They didn't, they didn't have a majority whether they were for the bill or against the bill.
What was it about?
The Red Flag Bill.
Oh. Well, it depends on which side you, you talk to. One side will say it's an extreme protection order and the other side will say it's a gun confiscation bill. So.
I'm, I'm not asking for, I'm just asking what, what is the bill, what does the bill say? Not what, how people interpret it.
It's, it's a bill to remove firearms from homes. And the debate is how it's done and what's being taken. So, the bottom line is somebody could accuse you of being unstable and the authorities can go in and take your firearms without due process.
Okay.
So.
All right, thank you.
The bill did pass, 213 to 162, but it's going to be vetoed and we have the votes to sustain the veto. There's bipartisan, bipartisan support to sustain the veto on this bill when it happens. So there was that one. Let's see, in municipal and county, there was House Bill 655. We heard from every realtor in Merrimack. This is the disorderly houses bill and, let me, let me just flip to the page.
Disorderly houses?
Yeah, I know, it sounds like quarters.
Do you remember that one?
Yeah. It's, can you hear me okay? It, it's actually a bill that if, it's, it's a, came to be through some, I think Town of Conway. Some reps brought it through there. People that rent, short-term rentals on their homes like Airbnb. There, it's typically not a home that's owner occupied for most of the year. It's rented and people have parties and it's very disruptive and there's garbage and loud music and drunkenness. And this bill was to, it was enabling legislation that would allow the town to pass ordinances that could ultimately fine the landlord $1,000. It had new eviction notices. I had some trouble with the bill just because there was a lot of vagueness in the language and there would be penalties for someone like the landlord on behavior that he or she wasn't party to. I don't see that, I didn't have it on my list of pertinent bills from Merrimack because I don't, unless I'm missing some really good parties, we don't really have that problem.
Well, I brought it up because we got a lot of emails about it, so. The roll call vote was 178 to 188, so again, it was bipartisan bill to, to pass the bill. Right? No, 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 inexpedient to legislature. We killed it, we killed the bill. Yeah. Let's see, I had brought up the carbon tax before when I talked to you. There was no debate, they tabled the bill, so that's gone for now. This one I brought up because this was interesting. Current law right now, if somebody has a few drinks and they know they can't drive, that they shouldn't drive, if they go to their car and sit there or take a nap, they could be arrested, convicted of a DUI even though they didn't do anything. Well, and that bill, to change the law, was killed in committee, but it was overturned on the House floor, which is a very, a very rare occurrence. And so it was, it was passed. So now it's gonna go on to the Senate because the House felt, the majority of the House felt that if people know that they shouldn't, they can't drive because they had too many drinks, that it's not a bad thing to take a nap in your car.
In the backseat or something like that, or? You mentioned that.
Janine, I kinda.
Oh yeah, this is the one you brought up.
And thank you for following up on that, but did that bill, you said passed or failed?
It failed in committee, but it was overturned on the House floor.
So it passed.
It passed.
Yeah.
Excuse me, if I could just correct that, it was actually, an amendment was accepted. It was, it, it, the committee's recommendation was to ITL the bill, which would essentially preserve what we have now where police would have more latitude in taking someone into protective custody or arresting them for, for attempted DUI. That failed, but an amendment was proposed that would, that more specifically defines driving. So if someone is not behind the wheel, if they don't have the keys, if they're in the backseat, they would not be able to be arrested, it would not be a crime, only if they are behind the wheel or, I don't have the language of the amendment with me, but it, it, it kind of clarifies. I had a discussion with Brian LeVek, he brought this to my attention, I don't know, a couple of months ago. And so I, I just sent him before I came, I sent him the amendment, I'll make sure to send that to you as well. It tightens up the information, I think it's a good compromise for people that had concerns on both sides of the aisle. It still gives the police officers the latitude to arrest somebody if they have an intent to drive. But if they're sleeping in the backseat, if their car is off, then there's no crime to be committed.
And I guess what kind of amazes me when I heard about this law at first was Supreme Court's already ruled on all this and kind of given us a, a rule of thumb on how you deal with it anyways. Give law enforcement a rule of thumb on it. I mean, you know, I, I guess it's there now as a law, but. I think the Supreme Court has already given everybody their guidance on it, I didn't know why it needed to be a law.
Yeah. The amendment number is 2781H, if you wanna look it up, so.
But it's, need to hear now there for this meeting.
Yeah, it still was a good senate, oh, actually it was a senate bill, so it'll go to the governor. Yeah. It was, it was a senate bill. So it'll go on to the governor as amended.
So another bill that we got a lot of emails about is Article 5 Convention. And that's what I was just gonna come and talk to you about this week and then we had the session, so there's other bills. So I don't know if you've ever heard of it or if you even know what it is, but I've been fighting Article 5 for 10 years. So I'm really excited that, is this the one? Yeah. It's picking up momentum and other people don't want it now too. Only 27 people voted to have a convention. Now, we only takes, need one call for one and we already have one. We have a call and it was passed in 2012 for term limits. Prior to that, in 2011, we rescinded the calls for all, all resolutions that were sent to Congress asking for an Article 5 convention to, to make proposals to change the Constitution. And it's very dangerous and more and more people are realizing that this is a dangerous thing, there's no rules. You don't know where it's gonna be, you don't know who the delegates are, how they get picked, who's going to, to make sure that they're safe. How are you gonna keep every lobbyist in the entire country to descend upon the delegates to make sure that they get their, what they want passed? And rules can be suspended and changed, we could end up with the Constitution thrown out. So I'm really happy and I hope you are too. And I brought the roll call vote because I just, wow, that doesn't happen. I'm like, 10 years, I've been waiting 10 years to get support on this, so I'm very happy. On the back, I have notes from Dick Hinch, he, he says Merry, not Merry Christmas. Yeah, he says Merry Christmas, he's, he's still in the last century. Happy New Year from Dick Hinch. He spent New Year's Eve at Exit 11 representing the Merrimack delegation. He's with the governor and they set the tolls to zero. Now, there was a bill today, oh, we were talking about it before. There was a bill today to eliminate the ramp at Exit 11. And the bill, there was a voice vote to ITL that bill, but there were two voices that I heard yell no to the ITL and that was Representative Hinch and Representative Berry. Now, the reason why is because Dick Hinch wanted me to tell you that he has a plan regarding the removal of the Toll Plaza, so they can't bring it back. And he will reveal that plan to you shortly. Stay tuned.
Thank you.
And that, oh, one more thing, last thing, because one of you asked me what I do. Well, this is my homework, so I get to go home and read every one of these bills that is going to be heard next week in all the committees.
Thank you. If you can stay there, just in case we have questions.
Okay. There are four items I wanna talk to you about. One, if you remember, a couple of months ago, I was here with like a 700, big spreadsheet I emailed you.
Of all the different filings, yeah.
So I just kind of wanna review to you a proposed process I have to make sure that the best interests of the, of Merrimack and the Town Council are represented and conquered. So, the, all those LSRs are now been assigned bill numbers and they've been assigned to committees and public hearings are now being scheduled. So, any of those bills that you would like me to take a position on, either go in and sign as for or against it, or to testify, speak at the public hearing, or to get people to speak, now is the time to let me know within the next, you know, couple of weeks. The public hearing portion of the legislative process, I think, is the most influential part because it influences the committee's vote, whether they're gonna recommend it to be passed or to have it be inexpediate to legislate. And that committee vote's really important. So be able to influence them at the public hearing, I think, is the most important part of the process. And that process is starting now. So I encourage all of you to let me know if there are any particular bills of interest. And then I'll update that spreadsheet with the, when, and once I know what bills I should be paying attention to, I'll, I'll make sure they're flagged with the public hearing date, executive committee date. That's when the committee will vote on it. And then, and then we can go from there. So, you've got all my contact information, let me know. The other thing I wanted to talk to you about is, as Janine mentioned, we began session yesterday for 2020. We heard bills yesterday and today, voted on them. These were ones that were retained in 2019. Of the view, of the vote, the bills that, that we voted on, the ones that I pulled out of interest, one is this extreme risk protection order. I just wanna give you some facts about that bill. 17 states already have it, they're generally called red flag legislations. But they're brought about by ex parte, so there's a specified people that can bring them forward. A family member, a spouse, ex-spouse. No neighbors, no, you know, not anyone can just bring an ex parte request. And there's a list of evidence that has to be presented. And if you go to the original bill, it's been changed a lot through amendment. In fact, the Murphy Amendment, named after our Nancy Murphy, is, she chaired the subcommittee on it, that worked on it this summer. But there's a list of evidence that has to be presented to a judge, there's hearing dates that have to be met. It, it's actually very similar to the domestic violence statute that we have in New Hampshire, where guns can be taken from someone who poses an immediate risk. They don't have to be convicted of a crime in order for that to happen. But there has to be demonstratable extreme risk pose. This bill got my attention, I won't go into particulars, but we've had several families in Merrimack who wish that this law was in place. One in particular had reached out to me convincing me that if this had been available, that their child would still be alive today. So we heard a lot of emotional, you know, stories about families that had been affected and it essentially comes down to suicide. But I have this handout which has the facts of the, the bill. I agree with Janine that it's very likely to be vetoed by the governor. But I think it was a, a vote of conscience for many people that really feel it's important to give families a tool to protect, to protect their family members, their loved ones who are very unstable and not, and not in a position to responsibly handle their gun or has threatened to harm themselves or others using that gun. So, I'll pass this around. The other bill that I think would be of interest since the Town of Merrimack is an employer is that the House voted today to raise the minimum wage. It's a tiered system, it goes up to $15 an hour in five years, in 2025. If it passes the Senate and if the governor signs it, it'll go up to $8.50 the end of this year. And then, like I said, it'll go up to $15 an hour effective January 1st, 2025. Right now, the state of New Hampshire is at 725, we defer to the federal minimum wage. It's among the lowest by far of our neighboring states. So we heard from border reps who felt that they needed this to remain competitive. Too many people go over the border, they can do the same job, make $2 more an hour, so. So that, that's one thing. I think probably when we get to Nattica Day Camp, that might, you know, for next year anyway, it would, would, would come into play, not this year. The other bill was enabling legislation to regulate the use of, of paper and plastic, single-use plastic bags. This is purely enabling legislation, it just allows a town to adopt bylaws or ordinances to control either the cost of them or the disposal of them or to ban them. There were actually two bills that were passed. This one was the most general one, I didn't support the other one, but they both passed, so. But it's, it would be up to the Town Council to decide if that's something that they would wanna consider in the future. And then as Janine mentioned, there was that DUI law which was accepted. An amended version was accepted, so I, I'll forward you the email I sent to the police on that. And then two other things I wanna mention, the, Nancy, I'm probably gonna steal your thunder a little bit, but the PFAS Health Sub, the PFAS Commission, the Health Subcommittee is having a meeting on Monday at 10 o'clock in the Legislative Office Building, room 302, 304. We had to move it up the floor to get the double room. We're gonna have presentations more about, from Dr. Lee and. Right, yeah, just to kind of go in. It's probably information you've already heard before, but we really wanna make sure it gets out to other statutory committees and commissions that are working on general water quality, drinking water issues. And then the last thing I had, which you're gonna hear anyway, is there is a, a continuing education program being offered to legislators on Wednesday, but it's open to the public and it's on Solid Waste. And that's gonna be in Representatives Hall from 1 to 3 o'clock. It may be streamed live, so when I get that information, I'll let you know, so you can just, you won't have to be there. And it might be a good thing for you not to be there. It is geared toward legislators, but I'll definitely let you know if it's streamed. Because I know there's nothing better you wanna watch after lunch than a presentation on Solid Waste. So that's all I had. Any questions?
Nancy, did you have something?
I just had one quick question, obviously I don't know the specifics about the Red Flag Bill. My only question was, and I understand both sides of the debate. Is there a hearing before a judge prior to taking the gun away?
There is, well, the ex parte, the family can meet with the judge. I have to look, there is, there doesn't have to be. The respondent doesn't have to be present for that initial hearing.
Okay, so that's the question, the major debate is the due process.
Yeah, there is, I mean, I don't wanna re-draw this, but.
And I can read up on it as well, but I know that that's a pivotal debate, right there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get to it, and it, they're all temporary orders anyway. They, they all expire no later than a year. So the, the maximum amount of time that the risk order is in place is a year. So it's not, and it, it could be a lot shorter than that. The respondent would have to come and show that the evidence that was presented no longer stands.
So, okay.
Yeah. May I please add, but if, if somebody accuses you and, and they come and they take your firearms away, to get them back, you have to go to court and it's not easy to get them back, which means you probably aren't going to.
So you prove your innocence.
Or a year, or a year. You have to prove your innocence.
A year, you automatically get it back.
And we got, I, I personally got a lot more emails from people who said vote no on this than those who vote yes. And I forgot, I have these books with me. The conference that I went to in August, American Legislators Exchange Council, they always send us free books and I, this is an economic roadmap prosperity to policy. It's rich state, poor, poor states, just the different, it's a comparison of all the states and I have four extra. Would anybody like one?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
May I approach the bench, sir?
Wow.
Oh, if, yeah, if there's, I can get it from him.
Put one in the office, too. I'll take him, I'll put one in the office.
We'll have one in the Council. Steve, Finley, you had your hand up first, I'm sorry.
Does anybody make minimum wage in New Hampshire?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. I suspect it's very few, because in Merrimack, I don't know that anybody does.
Well, I do too, because you look around at the department stores and they're all starting at $10 or $11.
Right. So I think, I just, my comment on the whole minimum wage thing is, I believe it's a market-driven thing. I think a federal minimum wage in Appalachian means a whole lot more than it does in Merrimack. So I just, I don't know where it is, it sounds like it was a House bill that just was dealt with.
Yeah.
But, so, any, that's, that's just my philosophical thought.
Finley, I, I see your point, because I'm in the Lakes region a lot in the summer and they advertise, we're not paying minimum wage, you know, because there's such a shortage of workers. But I'll send you some data, if you, when you look at the economics, it doesn't really pertain down here because there really aren't many jobs that pay minimum wage in the southern tier, but up in the north country. There are people that have jobs on minimum wage and they're getting food stamps. So it is, there, there is a, it's different depending on the region of the state, because the economies are different.
The economies are different, which is exactly why they're different.
But what provoked my commentary on it was when you pointed out Parks and Rec, like, we have a day camp. I can sit here and tell you it'll have a serious impact, because we try and make our revenues off those programs pay for the programs. And so I would imagine that would have a direct impact.
But we're not paying our people minimum wage.
Yeah, that point is, there is, I have to find it, the, for teenagers, it's a dollar less. So they're at a different. So they're at a different rate. Let me find it.
While she's looking, may I just add that I was at the hearing and I testified. I read testimony for someone who sent it to me and asked me to read it for them. In the testimony that I read, they cited, as an example, Seattle, Washington. They raised the minimum wage to fifteen dollars an hour. And the result was, everyone got their hours cut drastically. Teenagers lost their job. Because, and I talked to owners, employers, and I said, well, what do you think of the minimum wage? I'll take the owner of Dunkin' Donuts, for example. If you're an employer, and let's say you own a coffee shop, and you have to pay fifteen dollars an hour, are you going to hire a teenager? Are you going to hire an adult? I mean, so that's always been our argument in the ten years I've been up there is, you know, we don't want the teenagers to lose their jobs. And the free market works well. Let it work.
Well, it's the Parks and Rec comment that really struck me as potential. But the only other thing that I had, which was the only thing I had in the first place, but I changed, it was, we listened, Diane came to present for the Town Clerk Tax Credit, her budget desires. And it seemed to me, and I think others of us, that she's really tight with work there and is asking for a staffing increase, but I think it's less than what would probably be desirable for. We have E-Reg in town that we can use for our car registrations. I don't know if it's the same company that does our tax collection, because you can pay online for the taxes. But when it comes to things like boat licenses, you can't do that in Merrimack or anywhere in the state, because the legislature hasn't allowed it yet. And so anything with this type of program that towns could opt into, if you could make it so towns could opt into it, I think there would be a lot of potential for it. Dog licenses, I don't know if we get vital record requests here, or if you have to go to Nashua or something, but we do. So that would work. The boat registrations now, if you send it up to the state, the town gets no money for that. If they register in town, we get that money. So if we could make it as easy as possible for our residents, it would be very beneficial for us. I don't know, I'm thinking, maybe permits, we can do it for our town stuff as well. But if the state, if you, it's too late this year. I don't know if there's any legislation regarding it. But if not, I'm hoping to remember to remind you next year to maybe have a look at that and maybe help the towns out, because it would be very beneficial. Two points of revenue increase for us, and they help, you know, maybe ease up on our staff so that they can do the things that they're having a hard time getting done.
Yeah, it's not, just let me, if you don't mind if I address that. In the amendment that passed, there is no exception for teenagers. There was in the original bill. And then there was an amendment, which I voted for, which would raise it to ten dollars an hour. And that had the exception. But then, a second amendment, the final amendment was proposed, and that's what passed. But it was a floor amendment, so I didn't have a chance to really study this before. But I'll give this to you.
Thank you.
So you can see all of the specifics with it. And as far as the online capabilities for all the other registrations, Finley, let me look into that, because if there is a similar bill that's been filed, an amendment could be made, as long as it's kind of germane to the bill, that's a way of getting something through this year. So I'll check.
Eileen, did you have something to add to that subject?
No, I just, I wanted to know if you have the years and the amounts of what the wage, what the new minimum, oh, you just gave it to me. Okay. Okay, so eight fifty, ten fifty?
So that's been passed by the House.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, everything goes to the Senate, yeah.
So we have some kids that work for the day camp that make about eight dollars an hour. So at the beginning, it's not going to be a huge difference, but as it starts progressing.
As the years go by.
Yeah, so this year, there's no change. Next year, it would go to eight twenty-five during 2021.
Oh, it says eight fifty.
Oh, eight fifty, I'm sorry. So that would be next year, right?
No, it says eight fifty effective December 31st, 2020.
Okay, so 2021.
And then, ten sixty after that.
The year after that.
And then, eleven seventy, twelve eighty, et cetera. That's.
Barbara, did you have something? Oh, okay. Are we good? Any other questions? Peter?
Exit ten.
Thank you, thank you, because I've been arguing that, too. It's a mile away. What makes, I'm sorry. I live at exit eleven. And now, and, well, you do, too, and so do you. I come by your house every day.
We're between the two.
Why did they leave an exit ten?
For a lot of reasons, but anyway.
It is a mile away. They can go and run us over. They'll walk all on Camp Sergeant. There's a lot of pedestrians on Camp Sergeant, and we had this conversation, so we'll just see. We'll see what happens. Sorry. I'm just a little, I rate that. Exit ten is still there.
I believe exit ten is including the ten-year plan if that passes. Okay. And I believe that's 2021. So sometimes we have to be happy with half a loaf than no loaf.
And is that before or after they put the totals down below exit ten?
I think that would be a lot.
I'm telling you, that's what's going to happen.
The Hinch Plan's on the way, so we'll find out what happens with that.
Before, I'd like to.
They've talked about it for years.
Yeah, I'd like to revisit the minimum wage bill. Let me ask Shannon Chanley, Senator Chanley, if she can amend it in the Senate to include the clause about the teenagers that was in the original bill.
Great.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Yeah, and maybe I'll ask if she could come and discuss it with you at a future meeting. Okay.
Did you say you were in favor of that also, Janine?
In favor of what?
As far as not affecting it with relation to teenagers.
I'm sorry, I zoned out.
Okay, sorry. I do that a lot. So, not while you're speaking, though. So what Rosemary was saying is that she's looking at potentially putting together something that makes modifications to the bill whereby, you know, we don't have to worry about teenagers not being able to get a job or having to cut back on their hours, as evidenced with the discussion about a Parks and Rec worker. So.
So you're asking me if I would support a minimum wage, a mandated minimum wage?
No, I'm not. What I'm saying is, I thought I heard you say that that was one of your concerns, is all I'm saying. I'm not asking if you support.
Exit ten.
No, she was just, earlier on, you were saying that the loss of jobs for teenagers was a problem.
Yes.
But that's only a part of the problem with the minimum wage, not the whole problem. And so the addition that she's offering with Senator Chanley, maybe, because it hasn't even been discussed with her.
What, I have to read it?
May or may not have any impact on whether you would support it or not.
Also, waitresses, I was talking to a waitress today that says, this bill worried her because she makes a lot of money on tips and she doesn't want them messing with her wages.
Does this bill impact waitress tips? I mean.
It increases, I believe, the rate, the tip rate is presently at forty, and I think it would go up to fifty.
Correct.
Yeah.
I don't know what that means, but okay.
Tips directly from the customer shall receive a base rate from the employer not less than fifty percent of the applicable minimum hourly rate. So if it's eight fifty, it'll go to four twenty-five.
They'll get paid at least four and a quarter.
If it's fifteen, they'll get seven fifty plus tips.
Plus tips. Which will raise the cost of meals. Excuse me. Are we good?
Yes.
I'm good.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Which brings us to the town manager's report.
So I actually had hoped that I was going to have something about Assistant, not Assistant, Deputy Chief Leveque today on here, but it's not on here.
About what?
He is at the FBI Academy. He has, he applied to go to the FBI Academy. From what I understand, they only accept one percent of the applicants that apply. And he was accepted, and he's there now. And I'm going to have more information on that so that we can properly, you know, discuss it and give it its due appreciation and commendation for it. So, anyway, the planning board has reviewed the town capital improvements plan on the seventh, a couple days ago. And their formal recommendations for priorities will be coming to the council. From what I understand, there was, it was a fairly good meeting. There was some, there was some concern about the idea that a public safety building had changed from a certain amount of money, which I don't, did you confirm that? Four million dollars to bond to a. To a seven million dollar bond. And why, you know, why is that all happening? So clearly, one of the things that we run into is that for, we spend so much time thinking and waiting and prioritizing and deliberating on buildings and reconstruction of buildings or replacement of buildings. And the numbers cannot stay the same. So, anyway, but, so that's been done. And that will, their list of priorities will come to you. I'm assuming they were happy about the sidewalks?
I believe so.
All right. So then, speaking of which, the planning board will hold a public hearing on the Route Three pedestrian bicycle plan on the 21st of January. And will hold a workshop on several potential zoning amendments, primarily concerning several sections that need tweaks and slight modifications to address repeat ordinance admission and/or enforcement tasks, which I think will be very much appreciated by all, because it seems like when you have a person that, that, you know, people go to the edge of being in violation and then they just start all over again. So I'll give you an example. For somebody, you know, there's one particular resident that I know of that has an enormous amount of trash out. And it draws rats, and it does all kinds of things like that. And code enforcement will go down and say, listen, you can't do this anymore. And so he removes it, and for a couple of months, it's gone. But then it's back with fifteen or twenty bags. So I'm glad if there's some enforcement availability for people who are kind of taking, thumbing their nose at the ordinances by just, you know, taking care of it and then just repeating it. So, anyway. And that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions for Eileen at this point? Peter?
Eileen, regarding the public safety building, is it going to, much like with the highway garage, are we going to put together a committee?
Yes, we are. So I think that we've already, we had already discussed it informally at this meeting. And I think that it was decided, obviously, you, Counselor Albert, I think Barbara said she wanted to be on. I think Nancy said she wanted to be on. And Lon, if possible, but, you know, I mean, you guys, as I said to you before, when it gets to before, you guys duke it out. It's not going to be up to me. So, so anyway, that's kind of the way, that's where we are. So I think I'm glad you brought it back to my attention. There's just so much, so, so much going on right now that we do have to get back to it. So I think what we should do next is you collectively decide between you who's going to be on the committee. And we will invite the person that, he's an architect?
Yes.
The architect back in to go over in depth what the plans are, along with the police chief and the fire chief to go over those things. So.
Okay.
Anyway. I don't know how that happens.
I don't know either. I guess we'll have to agenda it or something.
Yeah, okay.
Or set up a ring in the parking lot. Peter's got to tie one arm behind his back, though. Any other questions for Eileen at this point? Okay. The, we have no consent agenda oral business for tonight, which brings us to new business, the town center committee charge, submitted by Town Center Committee Chair Nelson Disco, the town council to review and consider the recommended changes to the town center committee's charge. Is this an addition, a change to what was submitted? Is that a change from what was submitted to us in our package?
No. I didn't know for sure if you had, so I made extra copies.
Thanks.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for this opportunity to talk to you about a proposed change to the town center committee charge, which was initiated by this board in November of 2009. And today, we, since then, we've learned some things. And we've got a proposed change to this at this time, where we're going to ask for a member of the Public Works Department to be officially a member of the town center committee. The copy I just handed out to you says that it would be revised in December. But we thought we were going to be on an earlier agenda. We'll change that to this month, if the board so wishes. Our desire is simply to add a member of the Public Works. Specifically, Kyle Fox has offered to be that member. And he's here tonight, and he's agreeable to this. And the question was just to get this paper in order so that they're officially members of the committee. We still have openings on the committee for citizens of the town. Anyone who would be interested in working with us in the town center committee and planning for its future, very welcome. We don't meet very often, but we have fun when we meet. So that's my request tonight, that we add this, make this change as proposed there. It's highlighted in red on the copy I just handed out. And if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer, and thank you for the opportunity.
Have you looked through the whole thing to see if there's any other changes that maybe ought to be updated or?
At this time, yes. That's why, I should say that this points out two changes. In addition to adding the representative from Public Works, we've deleted the need for an Economic Development Citizens Advisory Committee, formerly known as the EDCAC, which no longer exists. So I've taken that out of here as a requirement. But that's, we did look this over, and that's all that needs changing right now.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments? Finley?
Actually, Nelson, you may have mentioned it, and I might not have heard you right out of the gate, but it shows four members. That's in red. I didn't know if that was a change.
There's four members of the public in addition to these members that are cited here.
But there have always been that, right?
Well, maybe there was five before.
I think there was five.
Okay, so that's what I was wondering.
We've used up one of them, yes. That's why it's in red.
Perfect.
We did have five, and now we've used up one of those empty slots.
Okay. Eileen?
Is there a Watson Park Committee still?
Excuse me?
Is there a Watson Park Committee still?
I don't know.
That's been disbanded.
No?
That's been disbanded a while.
It's been disbanded, okay.
That's how Jackie became a member.
So we should probably remove that from there?
Does it say that in, oh, the Watson Park Committee? Right before.
Right in the purpose, mission.
And Citizen Advisory Committee.
And the Heritage Commission.
Correct.
So it's the fourth line in that purpose and mission, at the end of it, it says.
The Watson, I see it, yeah.
But I'm curious.
We can do that. I wasn't sure if there was, if it was still alive or not, to be honest.
So it was, it states here that your purpose is to implement the pedestrian trail master plan. The Town Center Pedestrian and Trail Master Plan.
Yeah.
I wonder if that's truly your purpose for the Town Center Committee or if it's broader than that? I mean.
It was in two thousand and nine and we're, we're here to discuss any further changes. I was trying to keep this just simple to get, uh, the Public Works person on board. If the committee, if the council feels we should reword this or revise it further, I, I'm amenable to that.
Well, I, my, my thought was a pedestrian and trail master plan is an interesting opportunity to work with, but it's just a piece of what we might ultimately envision as a town center. But maybe it's, maybe it's all that you can focus on. I don't know.
At the time we chartered this committee, that was all we were supposed to be doing, okay?
Right.
We've pushed the edge a little bit here and there.
Yeah, I was thinking maybe you had, but.
And, and we'll continue to do that, but, uh, i- if the, if this council feels it would like to add to the scope, I don't think any of the committee members would object to that.
Yeah, I guess, I, I don't have wording that I would offer, but I, but the thought that I had was that to, to implement or to, to, to focus on a Merrimack Town Center, maybe with emphasis on the Merrimack Town Center Pedestrian and Trail Master Plan, just to give it a little more breadth, to give you a little more leeway, um, and maybe attract people to be more interested in it if they don't want to focusing on that plan only.
I'd be happy to work some other language if that's the wish of the council.
I think that'd be great. There were a couple of other things I was gonna offer later on as well, since I'm talking about it, if you don't mind. The, under the, on, on page two at the top, under the organization of the committee, it says the Town Council will fill all vacancies of council-appointed members. Um, a- and so maybe you would add the, or town staff, um, to that, since you're adding a, a town staff member. And then it would be, and the SAU Chamber and Planning Board would fill any vacancy of their representatives. But you don't mention the library trustees in that list and yet they're mentioned as one of the members, so.
Okay, I think you're suggesting, uh, that you would fill.
The council would appoint a town staff member and the library trustees would appoint their own representative.
Yeah.
Just while we're playing semantics.
Since we're coming back anyway, I mean, I think it's important that you mention these now so that he knows that, but since, since we're, um, anybody that has any suggestions, um, we can incorporate all of those and, um, and work on the language and bring it. No, but you can, tho- those topics are very important to bring up.
Yep.
That you just said.
The only other thing I would ask is that you, if you've checked into whether the, uh, ordinance and building codes down in the bottom, the last bullet, it points out ten point oh one parentheses two, eleven, twelve, and seventeen. If those are still the right numbers or if they got modified with the recent changes to the subdivision regulations, building codes and stuff. I, just to touch base with Tim and see if those are still accurate.
Any changes there, but.
Okay. Just to confirm it. That's all I really wanted to suggest or recommend at this point. Anybody else have anything? Barbara?
Yeah. You know, what popped out at me was the fact that this is an ad hoc committee. Usually an ad hoc committee is a short-term project-related committee. Do we wanna make this a full committee and not an ad hoc committee? That would be, uh, something that we would have to change the designation of the committee for. It's been around for ten years. Nothing ad hoc about it.
At the time, we thought it was going to be a much shorter time and we thought we, we were limiting our scope to just making that eye track plan happen. And, uh, now we're expanding our view of this. This is council's choice, I would say, and I.
That's a good point though.
So what would we do? Just drop the ad hoc from the status? Just created by the Town Council?
And then when we approve the actual charter, which this is, I think it's supposed to be, then it would be official. It would not be ad hoc.
Okay. Works for me. Okay, so if you can take it on as a work with Eileen's staff to, to clean this up a little bit more, we'll be happy to. I, I'm happy with adding the, the Department of Public Works representative. I don't see anybody arguing. Nancy?
That was the main issue. If you had any problem with that, we wanted to get that on the table.
Do you need permission from the council this evening to have Representative Department of Public Works appointed tonight in order for him to attend something?
I don't think so. I'd function with.
I didn't want, if, if you need him soon.
This is your committee.
We could do that section, but if it's, if it's not important in terms of time, we can do it all at once.
Eileen?
Kyle, if there's a meeting between then and now, please attend.
Unofficially.
And if it comes down to a tie vote that you need to break, sorry.
That's good.
Kyle's been very cooperative and willing to help us in any way and, um, I'm sure he would have no problem as long as nobody's gonna get upset about the legality of.
I just wanted to make sure that that was clear for you.
Thank you.
I'm good with it. Anybody else? Any other questions? Any other comments? You good?
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I'll be back.
All right. We look forward to it, Nelson.
Thanks, Nelson.
Every time. Which brings us to our next gen item, number two, recycling and Merrimack discussion. Uh, submitted by Public Works Director Kyle Fox, the cost of recycling in Merrimack will increase dramatically in December of two thousand and twenty. Public Works Department will present some options to the Town Council for the future of recycling in Merrimack.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Town Councilors.
I understand you have guests.
Yeah, we, so we, Chris and I were fortunate enough to attend a really good session with our, um, recycling partners, NRRA, yesterday. And, uh, so we thought it would be a really good introduction to our presentation to have them here. So we have Reagan Bissonette and Bonnie Bethune from NRRA, which is Northeast Resource Recycling Association, um, to do probably a ten-minute, fifteen-minute presentation for you before we kick off our presentation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, welcome.
Hi, I'm Reagan Bissonette, Second Director of the Northeast Resource Recovery Association.
And I'm Bonnie Bethune, Member Services Representative. And Lon and I go back a ways.
You need to make sure your mics are on and you get them a little closer to you. I know the paper gets in the way, but I, I could hear you Reagan, but I'm not sure we heard Bonnie, so.
Oh, there we go. Mine on. Thank you.
Is it bright green like hers?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, um, basically, um, we have been talking for some time about the changes that are occurring in the recycling world um, that are pretty drastic and, um, there, and, and I think a lot of people don't, um, although they may know kind of anecdotally, um, I don't think that they're, they know the extent to which recycling all of a sudden has changed. Um, and, and I'll give you an example. I, I said to my daughter, um, pretty, very shortly, um, very shortly, and in some, some towns already, um, it costs more to recycle than it, it costs to throw it in the regular trash. And she was appalled. She's like, no, I, I don't want that. I don't like that. Um, and she was just really, and, and I think people react that way to it because it's something that they do and it's something that they feel like they're contributing to the envi- you know, to, um, to the, um, you know, it's kind of their small part in contributing to, to the carbon footprint.
Maintenance of the.
You know, whatever. Um, so, um, so anyway, I, I thought that, um, rather than just having Kyle dive and, and Chris dive into the whole issue of money and those kinds of things, I wanted to, um, and, and, uh, these ladies were very gracious to offer to come and explain to, to us and to, more importantly, to the, the, um, viewing audience, what is going on with recycling and then we'll get into how that specifically relates to Merrimack and our, and our own situation. So, thank you very much. It's a, it's a very, um, interesting and important topic.
Yes, thank you for having us. I'll start by saying that trying to provide a brief summary of what's going on in the recycling and solid waste markets in less than fifteen minutes is a great challenge, but we will give you the highlights. Um, and I do understand from Kyle that you all have been kept abreast of this issue, so I hope that some of this will be new information for you, um, but also provide some context as you consider the decisions ahead of you. Um, so just briefly, the, the Northeast Resource Recovery Association, we are a recycling nonprofit and we're essentially a cooperative of municipalities. We were started almost forty years ago when a number of municipalities in New Hampshire decided to band together and pool their resources so that they could, um, have greater volume of recyclables to sell at market and get better pricing, but also to share information and provide each other with, um, technical assistance so that they could improve their recycling programs and reduce their waste. Um, and Merrimack has been a long-term member of the Northeast Resource Recovery Association. We do operate throughout New England, although the majority of our members are here in New Hampshire as well as in Vermont. The two key services that we offer for our members, the first is cooperative marketing and purchasing. So essentially, we help communities manage their own recycling programs. That means that we help with single-stream recycling or communities that are fully source-separated. Um, we can help with your electronic waste and recycling your light bulbs. And we work with Merrimack on a number of your different recycling programs, including your single stream. Um, and, and one of the most unique things we do, we're one of only a handful of nonprofits in the entire country that actually connects the sellers of recyclables to the companies that are purchasing, the, purchasing those recyclable commodities. And so what that means is that we have vendors that we work with throughout, um, the Northeast, even a few out in the Midwest and in Canada. Um, and, and that means we're uniquely tuned into what's happening with recycling markets because we are in the midst of those markets. And that, that is a lot of how Bonnie spends her day, is helping us move recyclable material. The other big piece of what we do is education and technical assistance, essentially to help communities improve their recycling programs. So we provide workshops, like the one that was referenced yesterday. Um, it was a special forum for members to talk about what's going on with dual and single-stream recycling in particular. Um, we also do a lot of speaking engagements like this. Um, you heard about the House of Representatives, um, continuing education event next week. I'll be one of the, the three speakers for that. So there's a lot of interest right now, certainly in what's going on with recycling. Um, and we've been spending a lot of time speaking with others to make sure there's accurate information out there. We also do provide a tremendous amount of technical assistance, actually going to, um, transfer stations and helping provide hands-on assistance on how things can be improved. Um, and then we do have school programs to help students, um, basically be informed about recycling and waste reduction and, and help educate the next generation. So to dive into a little bit of, of data that we thought might be helpful for you all, when we look at what is in the typical, um, average ton of recyclables that's coming out of a municipality, there was an interesting study that was done by the Northeast Recycling Council. They surveyed fifteen publicly-owned or operated material recovery facilities. These are facilities that receive single or dual-stream recycling. Um, and this is snapshot by weight of what materials are in the typical single-stream mix. So, um, and, and this helps explain what's going on with the markets right now. So you'll see the, the key things to take away is that fibers, which is your mixed paper and cardboard, that will typically make up at least half of your recycling stream. Here in Merrimack, it's, it's closer to sixty, sixty-five percent. That's the piece of the recycling stream that was hit hardest by China's national sword, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. Glass is by weight approximately a quarter of most communities' recyclables, and that's about, um, accurate here in, in Merrimack. Um, and then really plastic and metal, although there's a lot of talk about plastic by volume, or by weight, excuse me, it's, it's quite a small portion of your revenue stream. But it actually accounts for usually the greatest value from recyclables is from your metal and, and, and your number one and two plastics. So when we look at single-stream recycling, yes, go ahead, please.
So much. What is residue?
Oh, and residue, so coming out of a materials recovery facility, residue is essentially what the facility has to throw away. It's what comes in that they can't recycle. So it's going to be the wishful recycling, the plastic bags, um, other items that people think to throw into their recycling bin that's not recyclable. It also can include, um, perhaps small bits of paper that technically are recyclable, but they're too small to make their way through the machinery. So the residue is everything that materials recovery facility will have to throw away and that is at a cost to them. Um, and I'm glad you caught that I skipped over that one because it will be relevant to another one of the slides coming up. So when we compare single-stream recycling to fully source-separated recycling, so, you know, typically smaller, more rural municipalities, they'll still have their residents going in and separating out their aluminum cans from their plastic, from their, um, paper. The positives of single-stream recycling are certainly the, um, ease of use for residents, tends to take up less space in terms of storage, might require less staff time. One of the major downsides of single-stream recycling is that it tends to be associated with higher levels of contamination, essentially material that shouldn't belong in your stream in the first place. And even with communities that do an excellent job of making sure that your single stream is a very, um, is free from most contaminants, the fact that you're essentially, um, outsourcing that separation to a facility, those machines can never do as good of a job as individuals, you know, in separating out those materials. And so what happens is with single-stream recycling, we tend to see more contamination, more of that residue, coming out of materials recovery facilities. And what happens is that means that single-stream recycling, the resulting commodities that are being sold to the companies that want to purchase those and turn them into new recyclables, they tend to be of lower quality and therefore worth less money. And so for example, a bale of paper, of mixed paper, coming out of materials recovery facility might have broken glass in it. And that is not desirable because that is going to be problematic for the company purchasing that paper. So what we saw is that the higher contamination levels associated with increased single-stream recycling throughout the United States are a key factor that led China, which was a major purchaser of a lot of these recyclables, to, um, implement a new policy restricting the importation of certain materials. Because essentially, they were receiving a large quantity of that residue and it was leading to some environmental challenges for that country. So that brings us to China's national sword policy, which went into effect at the beginning of two thousand and eighteen. And essentially, that banned the importation of all plastics into the country, all unsorted mixed paper. So your, sort of your junk mail and your office paper and your cereal boxes, um, some textiles. And then also some, um, glass and metals. And even for the materials that China still accepts today, they lowered their acceptable contamination levels. So the international standard was about two percent of what you send in your material can have, material that doesn't belong. So in that, in that paper, you could have about two percent of glass and that might be okay. China said for anything we're going to accept, it has to go down to a half a percent. They made a much stricter limit and that is virtually impossible for our modern materials recovery facilities to meet without additional equipment. And so what happened is the, the very biggest impact we saw from China's national sword ban was, um, the effect on fibers. So as you recall, those fibers, your cardboard, your paper, that's half to more than half of your cycling stream. And the biggest number I can give you that's a bit shocking is that before China's national sword, China purchased over half of the entire world's scrap paper. Um, so when the largest buyers suddenly stopped buying, we had this massive oversupply of mixed paper. And since that's half or more of your recycling stream, that's a big factor in why we're seeing, um, a decrease in the revenue from recycling, especially single-stream recycling. So this is just a snapshot, the pr- trading price of mixed paper in, uh, early two thousand and seventeen was about a positive of eighty-five dollars a ton. That has dropped tremendously since we have this vast oversupply of mixed paper. And today, in January of two thousand and twenty, um, it actually costs seventy, eighty dollars a ton to recycle your mixed paper. And today, in January of 2020, it actually costs seventy, eighty dollars a ton to recycle your mixed paper at this time. And that's because there are just not as many buyers for it, and we don't have enough domestic capacity to use that here. The silver lining is that there are actually, across the country, we are seeing paper mills that are either coming online brand-new, that are going to take mixed paper as a, as a feedstock, or existing paper mills that are going to be taking more mixed paper as a feedstock. So there, there is hope coming down the line as we, as a country, decide to invest in the infrastructure to be able to recycle more of our material here. That takes time. So for example, we've been hearing from our vendors that we work with, that their hope is that by the end of 2020, we can hope to see the cost of recycling mixed paper decrease. That being said, this is a global market, you know. Just in the last few weeks, the price of mixed paper has dropped dramatically because India, who's been taking a lot of China's surplus, has been putting in stricter restrictions. So, what does this mean for materials recovery facilities? It's important to understand the financial impacts on them so that communities can understand why they're seeing such dramatically increased prices. This is a, a national snapshot of research that was done for materials recovery facilities across the nation. And the key takeaways are that over a ten-year period between 2009 and 2018, end of 2018, the processing cost for these materials recovery facilities has gone up from roughly sixty dollars a ton, and everything's done in tons here, up to, you know, maybe ninety-five dollars a ton. So the cost of operating those facilities has gone up. And, coincidentally, or not, the value of that, that average ton of recyclables has gone down, in large part because of China's national sword. And what we see is when we look at the, the breakdown of those costs of these materials recovery facilities, their fixed costs are doubling, have doubled over that time period. They need larger facilities, they need better technology. Their operation and maintenance costs have also gone up because they have labor shortages, and they're having to slow down the, the lines, the, you know, factory lines so that they can have cleaner material coming out because they need to meet tighter specifications now. And then also, we've seen an increase in residue. So we've seen an increase in the amount of wishful recycling, we can call it, but material coming into a materials recovery facility that cannot be recycled. And that has to then be disposed of by these facilities, and so their disposal costs are going up. Now, it's fine and good to look nationally, but we really want to see what's happening in the northeast. So, this slide refers back to that recent Northeast Recycling Council report, and they looked at the fifteen publicly-owned or operated materials recovery facilities in the northeast. And what we see is, back in 2018, communities that had a contract to bring their recyclables to these facilities, on average, were paying thirty-eight dollars a ton. That's a fabulous number. We will not be seeing that number again anytime soon, but that was 2018. You can also see that in the northeast, the average processing cost, the cost of running those facilities, was about eighty-two or eighty-three dollars a ton. And then you can see the amount of money that was made by the sale of the recyclables coming out of those facilities between April and June of 2019, was about forty-six dollars a ton. And then just three months later, the value of that material dropped almost a quarter. And that's because we've seen, primarily it's due to the value of your mixed paper continuing to drop. So, what this slide tells us is that many of these material recovery facilities are, they're just breaking even, or they're losing money because they're relying on older contracts that provide them with less revenue coming in when you deliver your material, and they're getting less revenue when they're selling the material at the end. And so, what we're seeing as a result of that is that, as contracts are being renegotiated, they're changing the game. They want to make sure that they are charging a high enough price at the beginning such that when you bring in your material, you're going to at least cover their operating costs. They want to know that they're going to break even. And so that's why we're seeing tipping fees largely over a hundred dollars a ton. And, we are seeing in some, in some of these instances, there are incentives if you will remove your glass from your single or dual stream. And that's because glass is very heavy, and there are limited markets for glass. One of the most popular programs we have through the Northeast Recycling, Resource Recovery Association, is our glass programs. We enable communities to either collect glass bottles and jars that will ultimately be recycled into new fiberglass insulation, and we also have a program for crushing glass into an aggregate to be used in road and infrastructure projects. And we have more and more communities that are getting online with that, but we currently service about a hundred and twenty communities throughout New Hampshire, Massachusetts, and Vermont. So we're seeing more interest in ways to get glass out of single-stream and dual-stream. We're also seeing sometimes options for either a flat fixed rate for your new contract, that's going to be a higher number, or perhaps a lower rate, but then you're going to have some kind of a cost or revenue-sharing risk built in. And, and we'll give some examples of that. And then I've already mentioned that we've seen some steep increases in the value of mixed paper. Yep? Yes.
So, just, just for a point of reference, when we look at tipping fees here in Merrimack for regular trash, just regular trash, just tipping fees, is going to be seventy-one dollars and fifty cents a ton. So that's just disposing of it, and this hundred dollars and over is just disposing of recyclable materials.
Right. And a piece of context I will add is that, if you weren't aware, here in the northeast, we have the highest tipping rates for trash in the entire country. And that's because we have the least amount of available space for new or expanded landfills. And so in other parts of the country, their, their cost of waste disposal may be half of what we pay here. However, I've never seen, we've never seen the cost of disposal of trash go down. We expect it will continue to rise over time. So, even though we might temporarily be seeing that some communities are opting to, for example, throw away their mixed paper while the market is so poor, over time, we can expect the cost of disposal will continue to rise, especially since we have such a limited capacity. So, over time, recycling is still going to be a, a cost-effective option for most communities. And, to wrap up, we thought it would be helpful to share with you a snapshot, and this is very much just a snapshot in time, illustration only. Don't come asking us for these exact costs tomorrow. But this is an idea of some of the pricing that we're seeing for different facilities we work with for single-stream recycling now. Bonnie, I don't know if you want to walk them through a bit of this, but the key thing to look at is that everything we're getting is over a hundred dollars a ton.
So, single-stream, just to note that over fifty percent of New Hampshire is single-stream recycling as far as population, you know, your larger communities, as yourself. About twenty-six percent of the communities are single-stream. Can you hear me okay?
Um, not really, but.
Closer, very close. I feel like I'm sitting way down in this chair. How's that? Is that better?
That's better, that's fine.
All right, great. When we look at this chart, know on the bottom that there are no single-stream material recycling facilities in New Hampshire. We don't see that happening in the near future, not even the distant future. So we have to take this material out of state, as you know. Our spot-market costs are NRRA negotiated costs with Waste Management. If they go into Rochester, say you decided to just go ahead and fill up one of your trucks and take it into Waste Management, it would, right now, it would be one forty-three a ton with glass included, and one twenty-three a ton without glass. You're starting to see that range broaden. They do not want that glass in there. If you took it down to Waste Management Bill Ricker, where they actually do the sorting, you're going to, you're going to see a lower tipping fee of one oh-three with glass and eighty-three without glass. The difference is, in Rochester, they're going to take that material, put it into a hundred-yarder, and transload it down into Bill Ricker to be processed. So basically, that's.
So you're paying for that transportation.
You're paying for that one way or the other. The proposed contract costs are, we do have a number of contracts we have with single-stream. That was relatively new for us in the, over the course of the last decade or so to get involved with single-stream because we were basically a source-separated commodities, but it demanded, the market demanded it. So, one of the proposed contract costs is about one, one oh-five a ton for one of the Massachusetts facilities. But we're also starting to see those facilities shorten their range of where they're taking material because there's just so much material staying in the United States. The main facility has the two options with a flat rate, which is higher, and then, as Reagan mentioned, the revenue-cost share. It's an annual, you'd either get a check or you'd get a, get a pretty big invoice, but you'd be paying less per ton along the way. And that's, that's a little bit risky and.
Just, just jump in.
Yeah.
I would, what I wanted to know is, we're, we're actually seeing proposals that are, involve the tipping fee as well as renting equipment and hauling. So have you incorporated those things into this hundred and forty-three dollars and, and that kind of thing, the, the hauling and the, the rental? Or is this strictly tipping fees?
Yeah, we tried to keep it simple. These are just the tipping fees at this point.
Okay, great, that's good.
Yeah, we've, Merrimack's had a great contract. We're pretty proud of it.
You should be. We're, we're, we're happy with it for now until November, right? November.
Well, and, and you've experienced since 2009, the changes in the market with our contract from baled, single-stream material back in the day, trying to just work it, trying to make, densify it, trying to do less hauling, to the program you have now, which is an all-inclusive program. It's like going on vacation. You have one cost per ton. From a budget standpoint, how heavenly is that? But the reality is, that was really good. A similar program is conquered. They, for the next two years, have a zero tip fee for their single-stream recycling. Their vendor is not happy with that contract, and it will change drastically, and they are prepared for that. So, you're not alone in all of this. That's all I had for the pricing anyway, unless you had other questions.
Peter, go ahead.
And this is all very interesting, and we've talked about it. So, this being said, we have, what, two options, just quit recycling completely or start separating everything, going back to the old way.
Well, you can do single-stream, it's just a different price.
But the price is just going straight up.
Can I, can I just interrupt? So, they're here just basically to tell you what the climate is and what the northeast is, and what has been occurring, and why we in Merrimack are going to be experiencing a big increase. After they're finished, and, and all this information has been imparted to you, Kyle will be talking about our options.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, are, are you done? Are you still working?
We're done.
You're done, okay.
We're done if you're done.
Does anybody have any other questions?
No, but I'm sure you're not getting a lot of smiles during your presenting.
It is a very challenging time, without a doubt. At the same time, this is not the first, this is not the first instance we've seen a downturn in the recycling markets. We went through this in 2008, during the recession. And what's different here is that the world's largest purchaser of recyclables has decided that they're closing their doors for the large part.
But it might be a blessing in disguise.
It may well.
To be able to force us, to be able to utilize those components here.
Yes, I think this, the, the, the good news from this is that we have a, as a country are having to recognize the amount of waste we generate and how we manage it. And as I said, we're seeing, you know, new investment domestically to manage that waste. So, I think long-term, this might end up being a good thing, but absolutely it is financially challenging for.
Painful in the meantime.
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
I guess part of it, when I, when I saw this in the, the issues with China and everything, is this part of the whole trade war issue too? Is this one of the byproducts of it?
It's actually totally separate, right, totally separate. So the trade war is really affecting the price of metals, scrap metal. And we really can't blame, well, I mean, both countries were, are involved in that trade war, but it's totally separate from the fact that China decided that they were having environmental issues. And that's why they stopped taking mainly the plastic and the fibers. So, they are unrelated, but same country.
Yep.
You're, if we could, if we, if you don't mind, circling back if we could, Reagan, about the domestic investment piece.
Yes.
I mean, what is, what is, what is a reasonable expectation for us as a community that is going to be something here in the northeast, or something in New York State or the industrial Midwest that is going to, you know, somebody's got fifty million dollars in their back pocket, let me start a paper mill to do, to recycle paper so that we can do recycled coffee cups and coffee clutches and toilet paper tubes, that kind of, I mean, what, how realistic is that expectation that there is, that somebody is going to significantly invest in, in recyclables? Knowing that China has basically shut the door on us?
Well, interestingly, one of the new mills is in Maine, and it's owned by a Chinese company because that company still wants access to our mixed paper, but they can't bring it into the country. And so they're actually going to be purchasing mixed paper. This is a new mill. We're actually going to be speaking with them about buying NRAs members' products. And then they're actually going to be creating paper pulp and shipping the pulp to China. So, even though China very suddenly shut its doors, they still have a great need for material. You know, their economy continues to grow, and they are working within their own country in establishing better resource recovery methods. But in the meantime, you know, they still do want some of the material, and so I think it's very realistic that we're going to have domestic infrastructure being built to manage our own recycling because it needs to go somewhere. But, a really big piece of it is quality. So, the better quality the material, the better. For example, we are still able to get all of our members recycling, recycled. We're able to find companies to buy the material. In the case of mixed paper, it's at a cost, but so long as that cost is less than the cost of disposal, it still makes financial sense for many communities to keep recycling, even with the depressed market. I wouldn't go so far as to say that we're at the bottom right now, especially considering the changes we've seen just in the last few weeks in the price of mixed paper. But I would say that I do think we will hit a bottom and go back up. You know, this is like the stock market. It goes up, it goes down. We're in a, we're in a big down. It will go back up again.
So is there.
It's a matter of time, and I don't have that crystal ball for how long.
But I mean, so based on the fact that they're looking at a place in Maine, I mean, I, the, the city that comes to mind is Melanocque that had absolutely paper, you know, you know, decimated by the, by the market. And then here in our own, you know, Berlin and Gorham and Groveton had paper mills up there. The probability of foreign investment coming into those, it's, 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 it's of your opinion, not necessarily China, but just in general, that foreign investment, because they see need, could, could invest in an, in an old, in an old paper mill and be able to.
Well, that, that's already a reality in Maine, yes.
Where in Maine? I get that's.
That's in Rumford, Maine.
Rumford, okay.
Yeah.
Just over, just over.
And then I'll also mention, I mean, this is not, we can't publicly disclose who yet, but there is also a company that is planning on opening a new glass recycling facility in Massachusetts. And that will be a game changer as well, because the largest purchaser of recycled glass in the country was in. um, was in Massachusetts and closed in twenty eighteen. Um, so we expect that that will come online in the next year. It just hasn't been publicly announced yet.
I asked the question because, waiting for Kyle's presentation, you know, the council's going to have an interesting discussion about whether to do away with recycling or stuck with what we have. I think for me, having some perspective, especially since both you and Bonnie have been involved with this, I'm going to assume for a very significant period of time. I would think that your institutional knowledge is valuable in understanding what that, you know, mind you, it's, it's all, it's, it's highly subjective, you know? Your opinion is, is, and I respect it, it's, it's subjective as to what that future may be. And the only way that I, at least for me, you know, the way I used to look at it is being able to make a decision based on somebody who's in the industry as to whether or not at some particular point, there's going to be a turn and an uptick in this, in this area. So, I appreciate the insight.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I am a realist and a pragmatist. Um, and I would encourage communities to continue recycling with the understanding that I respect that some communities have to make some temporary changes. Um, in some cases dispose of material. But, um, we certainly would not advocate that anyone wholesale give up their recycling programs. Although you might hear in the news that communities across the country are giving up recycling programs, it is greatly exaggerated. Um, there was actually a really good, um, report that was done, um, by a company called Waste Dive. And I believe they found sixty examples of communities with, um, in this case, curbside recycling, who had suspended or significantly altered their programs. We have only a handful in the state of New Hampshire who have done so. So if that provides.
Hook's the one that cut, Hook's it's the biggie.
Right, exactly.
Out of all.
But for the handful of communities that we know of who have significantly curtailed their recycling, there are dozens and dozens of examples of communities who have been making strategic proactive adjustments to their recycling programs so that they can weather this storm, such as removing glass from your recycling. You know, which, which is such a heavy object that is quite expensive to recycle. If you can move forward with a contract, for example, that allows you to remove glass. Um, it was Strafford, Vermont was paying a hundred and twenty-one dollars a ton for their dual stream recycling. They took out the glass and are now only paying thirty-five dollars a ton to manage that glass through one of our programs. And that's a tremendous cost savings for them. So we, we are seeing many communities getting creative, um, and not wholesale stopping.
Thank you, Mr. Truman.
So I guess a, a key takeaway is that you don't see the, the need in China evaporating. They may be creative in how they're going to fill that and it may take a year or two or some unknown amount of time before they find a way. But there's still a, there's still a market there. Whether we bring them, single stream and let them sort it and deal with it, or whether they process it here and bring the product over there, I mean, they still need the resources. And so there's still a market in the world for recycled product.
Right, there, there's this bit of a gap because, um, you know, they certainly overnight didn't develop the infrastructure in their own country to.
To resolve that issue.
Capture all the material they need. Um, it, it, it's been very problematic for many of those businesses that relied on importing our recyclables. In effect, we were exporting, uh, we were outsourcing the sorting of the recyclables to, you know, a country where the cost of labor is less expensive to do so. Um, whereas here in the United States, we have to rely on more expensive equipment to sort out our materials.
Right, it, do you suspect that it's the residue that was causing them the most trouble? They're just building up too much residue?
Right, there, well, it was, it was a wide number of factors, but I would simplify it by saying that essentially there were not as strict standards in what was being imported. And so, I think in part, we and other countries got lax in feeling like we could send material with a large amount of residue. Um, and in China, they didn't necessarily have a good system for managing that waste, um, when they couldn't recycle it. Um, and, and yes, that led to, um, some really significant environmental problems in China. Um, and a real PR issue for them that ultimately, I think was a major factor in them implementing this ban.
So, short-term, we just need to adjust to try and manage the situation. Long-term, it's going to likely take care of itself, either by in- increased, uh, production capability in the area or something in order to, to recreate a market for that.
Right, right.
And, and then we'll just be left with dealing with residue and stuff like that in the, in the country instead of exporting the, the residue. And that's an ongoing issue with what's going to end up in the landfill anyway, right?
Right, right. I mean, and certainly the, the, the best step would be anything we can do to reduce our waste a bit. You know, even as a, even as a, um, community, if you want to look into, can you be encouraging people to bring their own reusable, you know, mugs to events? Or just anything you can do to cut down on your waste. It certainly saves money.
Well, we'd love to do that and we're trying, but it's, it's hard to get that educational piece out there.
Absolutely.
I know you're very much aware.
Absolutely. It's very challenging.
But so when we, when we looked at the oil crisis and gas was going up to four and five dollars, people were, were going after oil anywhere they could find it in the country. And then when it dropped back down to two fifty or so, a lot of oil production in the States shut down because it wasn't valuable to them anymore. I perceive that here with waste recycling too. I mean, if it gets up to hundreds of dollars a ton, somebody can afford to build a machinery to, to sort it. But if it were to drop down too much more, that would be difficult to maintain. So I'm not thinking we're ever going to get back to where we're actually getting cash for our recyclable material. Just because the cost of, of management, sorting it and stuff like that is going to keep us out of that. Do you, do you have any thoughts on where that might go or? Crystal ball?
I always think half full, so I've been doing, I always think half, the glass is always half full. Um, I've been doing this for forty years, so I've got to see the trends as they come and go. And, um, as a broker, which is basically what I do for the, the communities, this is very different. Um, this, even the source separated material, the cardboard, I have to provide pictures to all of my vendors in order to get a price. I have to truck the material to the market. They're not all picking up anymore. We're providing, pretty much doing all the legwork to get that material to, what we try to do more mill-direct. Right to the mill. Don't involve another broker. Don't involve a broker that's going to send it, material to India, which is where it's taking the mixed paper at this point. They're getting full too, because China isn't taking as much. Um, so it's a very different world, but we're always going to need those resources. When you go to buy a Tide bottle, say, says post-consumer sixty percent, forty percent, that's what we're producing here. And as we encourage that more, there's going to be a more of a need, there's going to be more of a need for that. So I just see things improving as far as quality. Um, the cardboard bales that we produced even two years ago are very different from what we're producing right now. We're, we're making that spec better and I hope that doesn't go away when the prices begin to improve. I hope we continue to make product. And I want us not to all feel guilty about what we sent to China. Because when a, when a barge comes into LA and they're full of products that we have purchased, that we want, they didn't want to go back empty. So they were handing us money for the material we were producing. And if it wasn't up to snuff, they were still taking it and they were still handing us money. So we were both, it was a dual responsibility here. So now we're cleaning up the products. We're making something that we can sell. We are very proud, as Reagan mentioned, to be able to move all of the product out of communities of two hundred people or communities the size of Merrimack. We're just going to keep on doing what we're doing and, and be here for everybody, hopefully for the next forty years.
But, but if we continue with single stream, then it's not really anything that we can do. It's the sorting people that are going to be improving the quality. That's going to make the veil of paper be a valid project, product, right? I mean, it's.
Well, part of pulling out that glass is making it better from, right from the beginning.
Yeah, but that's now no longer single stream. Now it's dual stream, right?
It's single stream with a twist.
Okay.
It's a new one. Dual stream is if you're putting all of your containers in one and all of your fibers, you know, paper, cardboard and another. So pulling just glass out is a new thing.
And, and some of the single stream, um, facilities want the glass out and some of them do not.
Sure.
They've based, the ones who do not have based all of their criteria on that model. So this is just going to keep getting more interesting.
Got the ability built in to be able to sort it out.
Correct.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or? Thank you very much for your presentation. We really appreciate it and the work you're doing on our behalf.
Now, now for the good news from Kyle.
The good news, yeah. Yeah.
Good evening again. Um, I first wanted to start by introducing you all to our, I'm going to pull this chair up a bit. Um, introducing you all to our new solid waste foreman. Um, as you know, Steve Dumas retired a bit ago.
I was going to ask, thank you, please do.
This is Chris Perrow, our new flame.
Hi, Chris. Welcome to the job.
Thank you, thank you. So we're going to do a, um, a fairly in-depth presentation for you, um, about much of what Reagan and Bonnie covered. So we'll kind of go over that stuff pretty quickly. Then we're going to get in-depth into basically what Chris and I have, have put together as four different options um, that, that we could choose to go forward.
We're not planning to make any choices tonight.
Correct.
This is, this is kind of preliminary budget material information.
And I would actually caution not to make any decisions at this point. Um, because the markets are changing so fast. Um, I think we, you know, patience can be, can actually help us. Um, that being said, signing early three years ago and six years ago got us these unbelievable deals that we've had. So it's, it's a, it's a difficult challenge, certainly.
We have to be aware, but cautious, yeah.
Correct. So how we recycle today, um, as you heard, uh, a bit ago. And as you all know, uh, back in May of two thousand ten, we started, um, single stream recycling um, from our previous, um, source separating that we had done. There were a number of reasons involved in that. Mostly because it was simple. Uh, it got people in and out of the transfer station quick. Um, it was easy for residents and it was really designed to increase the amount of material that was recycled versus put into the landfills. Um, and since May of two thousand ten, we've recycled nearly fourteen thousand tons of material in Merrimack. This is a, uh, a flyer that we've had for that ten years. Um, kind of shows what goes in the stream and what doesn't. This, this chart shows, um, where, where the recycling costs are. So our journey through single stream over the past ten years. You'll see on the early side of it, and I'm not sure why the red line moved. I apologize for that, but that's supposed to be on the zero line. But you can see the early part, um, of two thousand ten, eleven, and even into two thousand twelve, we were making money. Uh, we were being paid for our recycles. Then that changed around two thousand twelve and you can see the precipitous drops that, that we've had recently.
Um, again, when we're talking about this, we're not talking about just tipping fees. So when we were talking before, we were talking, um, when NARA was up here talking, they were talking about tipping fees transfer, uh, only. We're talking about the whole ball of wax. So it, so now, even though we're paying sixty dollars a ton, they pick it up and take it away. We don't see it anymore. So it's, it's all in, sixty bucks all in, uh, of a cost.
Plus our cost of, of collecting and, and, uh, running that, the recycle center. That's not part of the sixty dollars a ton, but.
Right, but I mean. Yeah, but what, what I'm talking about is there's a vast difference between, um, you know, between, uh, including it or not including the transportation.
The hauling cost, the transportation cost is, is what, thirty dollars a ton or something or?
No, it's more like fifty.
Fifty?
Right.
Right now, it's included in the price.
Well, I know, but when we take our trash.
Regular trash.
To the, to the, to the trash center, they, we, we pay them sixty or seventy dollars a ton to tip it.
And our, we're about fifty, fifty-five dollars for transportation costs.
As part of our built-in solid waste cost, yeah.
And I, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I just want to make sure that we.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
That there's a, there's an additional fifty to sixty dollars of handling fees, if you will.
So the current state of the recycling markets. Um, as, as Reagan talked about, um, there's a glut of recycled material in the world due to the changes in China and now suddenly India. Um, as they spoke about, the price of mixed paper was eighty-five dollars two years ago. Um, in revenue, now it's a cost of eighty dollars, which is a huge change. Um, we've been protected from these price changes largely, um, you know, not as good as Concord, but similar to Concord because of those two, three-year contracts we've had the last six years. That all expires on November thirty of this year. I'm going to skip this slide because it was covered pretty well, um, before. So, what, how much do we recycle? So we're, we're really very consistent over the years. Um, the high of fifteen, twelve, fifteen hundred and twelve tons, five years ago to fourteen hundred fifty-eight tons last year. Um, we, we do a lot of projections in, in the upcoming parts of the presentation. So for the sake of those projections, we've taken our five-year average of fourteen hundred seventy-seven tons per year.
So if I can interrupt a minute, this, we've been recycle, we've been single stream since two thousand ten.
Correct.
We hit a, a high tonnage midway and now we're, we're sloping downwards?
We are, but our trash also went down.
Okay.
I think.
So as a percentage, maybe it doesn't look as bad?
The, the percentages have been almost identical throughout. Um, I think one of the factors is with the, the economy being so strong, there's a lot of folks who are having stuff picked up right at their house. They can afford that extra expense rather than the time to bring it to us.
At our transfer station, it's being hauled by some other carrier directly to the.
So we don't even see those residents' trash or recycles.
Okay, sorry, thanks.
Sure, no, that's a great question. So, uh, again, as, as Reagan talked about, um, this is kind of a sample breakdown of, of what's in our recycles. Um, we looked at a couple of different sources and they were pretty, pretty similar. Um, so our mixed paper and cardboard, fifty-eight percent. Um, the aluminum cans and steel cans, three and a half percent. Plastics are about eight and a half percent, twenty percent glass and that ten percent residue. That's the stuff that shouldn't be in there. Yeah, which is pretty good. We, our current vendor has commented that the product that we send to them, um, is actually pretty good. So the, uh, the folks, you know, Chris's staff, uh, we, they've been with the town a long time and, and they do just a great job and they really care. Um, and that, that shows in the product that, that we've been sending out.
Do they put an effort into sorting out the residue if they can or?
They absolutely do, yeah.
What kind of stuff do you end up pulling? Can you talk, I mean, is there something that we can be doing educationally to get people to stop throwing away those bad things?
Yep, so, uh, uh, by way of example, um, I think it was last year, uh, those who use the station probably saw some, you know, kind of tongue-in-cheek, but trying to be educational flyers we put up about wishful recycling. And there was a picture of a car bumper in there.
Classic.
A what? I'm sorry.
A car bumper.
Car bumper.
Plastic car bumper.
Oh, plastic car bumper.
Yeah, it's plastic, so it's recyclable. Again, tongue-in-cheek, it's not recyclable. You know, garden hoses, um, all those kind of things that, that, you know, the urge for people to recycle is there. They want to, um, again, it was kind of spoken to earlier in Eileen's example. People want to help, you know, they see it as a way that they can help protect the environment, do their part. do their part. And unfortunately, sometimes that leads to contamination. And one, one of the real big culprits is the manufacturers. You know, as they, they strive to make packaging cheaper and more economical for them, they take no consideration in the folks, the municipalities who are the end, at the end of the line have to deal with that. The example I like to give is the, the orange juice containers. You know, you've got that nice paper orange juice container now, but it's got that plastic piece on the inside with the, that the cap screws onto. Simply not recyclable because the machine can't separate the two materials.
I'd been contaminating the stream.
You know, and, and, and really, there's dozens of examples like that, you know, the toy packaging for, for kids nowadays. It's got all those metal ties in it, the tape. I mean, you, you need a jackhammer to get the toys out of the packaging these days. But that really makes that cardboard unusable. Nobody wants it. But it still ends up in the stream because people wanna do their part.
Yeah, but they leave the plastic and the tape and all that stuff attached to it and.
Exactly.
So I, just anecdotally, I was on vacation last week and, and all of the recycling trucks down there had this big sign on the side with a picture of a garden hose. It said, "The hose knows it's not recyclable," something like that.
That's great.
It's interesting that you mentioned the hose. And I guess they must throw away a few hoses down there, but there must be other things that, that could clearly be defined that maybe we could help to try and educate.
So, so you're telling me that instead of the paper, cardboard, orange, orange juice container with the plastic cap that's in the way, it's better for me to buy that heavy, heavy plastic jug of orange juice because that whole thing's recyclable?
Yeah, absolutely.
How about Christmas wrapping paper? Because that was a question this past Christmas.
I'll let Chris answer those specifics.
Okay.
It's similar to the, the toy packaging. It, it's the tape, the extra stuff, so really ideally household trash.
Wasn't as easy as I believed for the past ten years.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there's a phrase that I've been hearing some use in the industry, you know, if in doubt, throw it out. And I think that's becoming more common. One of the things that, that I got out of the, the conference that we went to at NARA yesterday was a really good idea. They're doing this up in Guilford. They're making sandwich boards and actually putting pictures of the things that don't belong. So Chris and I talked about that and I think we're gonna try and do some of that, you know, and, and we'll pull it right from, right from the stream.
I'm sorry. I mean, I thought I knew what I was doing all this time.
This wrapping paper, is the ribbon and stuff like that, that's not recyclable? I mean. I mean, because you, at, at Christmas, all of the wrapping and everything went into a bag. It's not gone yet, but it was gonna go as paper and get tossed out. And you're saying, don't bother. You'd rather it went in the.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, thank you. See, I learned something. I can go home tonight eventually.
So we wanted to give you a little snapshot of some pricing on single-stream in the last three years as well. So in the black text from seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen is kind of the area average that our NARA partners have, have been experiencing. And you can see, well, we were a little higher in seventeen, but eighteen and nineteen, we've had really favorable pricing compared to the, a lot of our neighbors. So what happens now? Our contract with the L Harvey expires November thirty. And the fifty-seven fifty, which again is an all-inclusive cost, tipping fee and transportation and rental of the containers and rental of the compactor, maintenance of the compactor, everything is included in that fifty-seven fifty. That's gonna be gone. So we're talking to, to a couple vendors right now, trying to get a feel for the market and, and see what options are available. And, and in light of that, you suggest there's probably four distinct options that we could go with. Option one, continue our recycling program as it is and absorb the costs for the short term, hoping that we see the turnaround sooner than later. Option two is return to source separation, which is what we did before two thousand and ten. Option three, suspend the recycling program altogether and just treat it all as trash. Or option four is some sort of hybrid recycling. And we'll get into each of these options in some detail. So option one, continue recycling. Some of the considerations are, the new vendors have expressed the, the strong importance of maintaining compositions. Again, you heard Reagan talk about, some companies want the glass in there, some don't. And some are offering us the option of with or without and giving different prices for each. But in that, we're gonna be subject to more strict audits than, than we've had. The ten percent number seems to be the number that they're, they're setting out as the, the break-even point or the breaking point. If your contamination is over ten percent, you're gonna pay a surcharge on that load. So that's gonna become even more important, really with any of the options. All other costs would remain similar because we'd be operating the same way we are today. And in, in these projections we're doing, we're assuming each recycling container will hold about five ton. That's what we, we see on average and.
You got a pole in there.
I tried to get all the poles out.
We, we were laughing today because he kept using the word pole and I said, you can't use pole. It's not pole. It's, what, what did we say? It's loads.
Yeah.
So he, I found one on ya.
Yeah. So what is our projected cost for fiscal two thousand, fiscal twenty-one, which is the budget we're talking about now? So July first to November thirty, we, we're locked in our fifty-seven fifty a ton. No trucking cost, no equipment cost. So that's very straightforward. Starting December first, and I'm gonna use kind of an example of some of the, the talks we've had with vendors. Again, this is all very subject to change, but this is what we know today. So a tipping fee of, of almost eighty-five dollars. The trucking cost would be two hundred and sixty dollars each time they come and get the container, that five-ton container. And the equipment rental, which is the compactor and the, and three, three trailers would be about three hundred and fifty dollars a month. So working the math through the, the matrix here gives us a total fiscal year twenty-one cost of a hundred fifty-five thousand, which equates to an increase from fiscal twenty of almost seventy thousand dollars.
Can I ask something? I believe that's already in the budget though, right, Paul?
Yes.
Most of this is, the budget, Paul and I worked on this, worked on the budget, of course, quite a while ago. And at that time, we, this, this matrix has changed since then. What we have in the budget is an aggregate of ninety-two dollars. Where as you can see, our current aggregate is more, more likely a hundred five dollars.
Paul?
Yeah, we put ninety-two dollars in the bu, per ton in the budget of fourteen seventy-seven tons, so there may, there may need to be an adjustment. Things are working through the negotiation process.
Not a lot.
Not a lot.
What, my point really is, is that we've already anticipated this in a large part. So we're not saying to you, now that you have your budget, guess what, here's another seventy thousand dollars.
That's a great point, yeah. So once we, we have a full year of, of, outside of the current contract, the, the increase in the next two years after, and I compared everything to fiscal year twenty, which is our current year, would go up by a little over a hundred twenty thousand each year for a tipping fee of around a hundred forty-one dollars. Or for a total fee of a hundred twenty, forty, a total fee of a hundred forty-one dollars per ton. That includes transportation.
One of the things that I would like to point out to you that came, that really came to my attention when Reagan and Bonnie were giving their presentation. We were, Paul and I have been for a while negotiating with a particular company just to get some ideas on numbers. And, you know, we talked about how, how we could do this kind, and kinda thing. And if you look at what, what the numbers, we've actually been quoted from this company is significantly less than what Reagan and, and Bonnie were quoting a hundred and forty-three dollars a ton, a hundred and twenty-some-odd dollars a ton. So I just wanted to say that we, while what they were saying is, is important, that we're already on the hunt for a better price. And we already have a better price than, than most people that, that's been offered to us.
So the second option would be returning to source separation. Some of the considerations to think about, there would be increased labor costs. Right away, we would have to add a third recycling attendant. Those of you who were on the council back then will recall, we did eliminate a recycling attendant position when we went to single-stream. Going back because of the increased complexity with source separation. We feel right away you'd have to add that position back in. It'd be increased utility costs, supplies for the, the bailing of, of the product, storage of the product, transportation costs. One of the biggies would be reintroducing source separation to the public. That, I, I think would be a real challenge from, from a number of standpoints. One, people like the simplicity of single-stream. But two, those who used the transfer station ten years, the recycling center ten years ago will recall the delays. When you're asking folks to, to sort your things into five or seven different categories, there's, you know, that takes a lot more time than dumping your one bucket. There's also a lack of room at the transfer station to store all these materials. Right now, our recycles all commingled. They get put into the compactor. The Harvey comes up with their truck. They actually take two of them at a time. They just haul them away. When it's full, the loader operator takes an, takes a full container, pulls it out, puts the empty one back on, and we're done. When you go to sorting your, your components, you need to have enough material to fill a trailer to make it worthwhile to, to make that transportation. So you're now onsite storing all of these materials. And particularly the paper goods, you have to keep them dry. Otherwise, nobody wants them. As, and Reagan and Bonnie both spoke about this yesterday. As hard as it is to get rid of paper anyway, if it's wet, they cannot find anybody who wants it. So that's a big consideration as well. In addition, would be the capital expenditures to re-gear up. We use the, the old baler occasionally still. Ian and Paul do a nice job of pulling certain stuff out and they actually do a great job of pulling the bags out and, and bailing those and, and, and those kinda things. But to go back into this kinda production mode, we would most likely need to purchase a new baler. In addition to a, a trailer to, to truck all of our, our stuff away. And you'll see that in a slide coming up. So this slide kinda shows the, the tipping fee costs for the various commodities broken down in a, in a source-separated model. We got these costs, revenues and costs from NARA and they're, as of yesterday. Yeah, please do.
Tom, if you mind.
Yeah.
So basically, it, it seems a little, when I look at it now, it seems a little bit confusing. So the first ti, the first thing that we were talking about was continuing the, the recycling program, which we, we looked at and we talked about. This one is where we would actually do the sorting and we would, we would then sell it or pay for it by the thing. So we wouldn't have somebody come and pick it up and bring it away, but we would actually have, have people come, whether we do it ourselves or somebody else do it, come and pick up these individual kinds of things. And then we would deal with NARA with what the market, with the market does. So conceivably, although in this case it's negative, normally you would see a positive. So you, when you sell your, so, so what they're saying is that, that for mixed paper, it costs eighty dollars a, a ton. So we would actually go somewhere and sell it, pay eighty dollars a ton at that location. Is this, is this right?
That's exactly right.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure that we understand why we're talking about commodity prices here is because we would actually be dealing with the commodities as a component of the costs.
Yeah, so as Eileen said, that's exactly right. So these are the, the costs to tip each of these products in the market. Again, it doesn't include transportation. We'll get on to that in the next slide. So cardboard baled would get us fifty-seven dollars a ton. It's only fourteen percent of our waste stream though, of our recycle stream. But we'd get twelve thousand dollars a year out of that. The, the big game changer between when I started doing this presentation, putting this together a couple of weeks ago and today was the mixed paper. We were, we were at closer to, to twenty when we first did this. Now it's at eighty. And you remember from Reagan's presentation that the mixed paper is the biggest component in our, in our recycle stream. Forty-four percent. So all of those different, different things based on our composition percentage, using again our fourteen hundred seventy-seven average tons per year, that's us paying forty thousand dollars tipping fee to send our, our product to market. Taking that forward, you see that in the annual revenue column at the top right, which it's actually a cost. And then the annual cost to, to go back to a, a source-separated program, sixty-five thousand dollars for salary and benefits for the employee, extra overtime for the EO threes, because they still need to transport that material. They're, they're quite busy with the trash stream already, so that, that would likely be done on overtime.
So the EO three is your truck driver that's.
There are truck drivers, yeah. And we have two of those currently. In this model, we, we feel very comfortable that we'd be able to do it on overtime rather than hire an additional employee, which, which makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, eighteen thousand versus sixty-five or.
Exactly, yeah. We would need to rent some trailers again. We have to keep the product dry. That's about fourteen thousand dollars. The bailing supplies are about a thousand. Trucking, which is the maintenance of the vehicles and extra fuel would be about eleven thousand dollars a year. And then we would need to buy the new baler, which is about a hundred thousand dollars, and a new box trailer to take the materials. So factoring those as a, as an annual cost, but again, based on today, because these numbers are gonna fluctuate, hopefully better, maybe worse, but would, would be an estimated cost of a hundred twelve dollars per ton as a source-separated program. But the important thing to keep in mind, that the two numbers at the bottom right are, we would have to make that capital purchase just to start the program. So year one, it's actually gonna cost us over two hundred dollars a ton because we have to make that purchase. And then we would, the, the number in the left-hand column would be the ongoing number because then we would presumably start saving for the replacement of that equipment in our capital reserve fund.
That, and you're assuming the same amount of recycled materials, the fourteen seventy-seven tons?
Correct, yeah.
Which I would think would go way down if you went away from single-stream and.
It could, yeah, potentially.
People would go back to their, just throwing it away because it's too much trouble to sort and store and haul and everything. I mean, all the same problems that we'd run into at the recycle center, they're gonna run into at home. Or spend a lot of time doing it out of the back of their car or something, but.
That's correct. That's correct. So that's option two. Option three would be to suspend recycling altogether. There'd be some increased labor costs. Again, the EO3s would have to truck an additional 15% of material to the incinerator. So that many more trips on the road. Again, that would be handled with overtime. I think it'd be pretty difficult for many residents to accept that change. Again, people want to do the environmental, do the environmental thing where they can. And I would point out, the recycling center does a lot more than just single stream. We recycle light bulbs, electronics, propane tanks, batteries. There's a whole lot that goes on in that building beyond the single stream. So we would still have to keep that building open and processing materials through there. Projected costs per ton for suspending the recycling operation. We've kind of broken it down into the tipping fee, which is $71.50 currently. But that goes up a little bit each year. That contract comes to an end in a couple of years. So Eileen and Paul are already working on that one as well. We're assuming there'd be about 75 additional loads to take care of that 1,477 tons. EO3 overtime, we've kind of picked an average wage. And again, the 416 hours is eight hours a week. And then we took the wages of the EO3s and scale operators and just took a 15% component to, again, make up for the additional trash stream. And what we come up with is a cost per ton of almost $120 per ton. So still, we're, you know, all of these different options are still kind of in the same ballpark so far. And then, yes?
And what would happen to the worker who's currently in the recycling shed?
Well, that would be a discussion we'd have to have.
Wouldn't he fill one of these positions that you're saying would be extra?
What's that?
Wouldn't he fill one of the positions that you list here as extra?
No, because it's a different qualification.
Can I just say something? We should be talking about employees here, because I don't think that that's a viable option anyway. So I just, I would prefer, because it's not like we have a whole category of employees. They're actually individuals. So I'd rather not, I'd rather not get into that discussion unless you're going to be, unless you're seriously considering that particular option, if you don't mind. Thank you.
So option four is a modified recycling program. The most common that we've seen in the newspaper, and Reagan and Bonnie both kind of commented on it in their presentation, was pulling glass from the recycle stream. We could certainly do that. Chris has already started working with his folks on what would that look like logistically? How would we actually make it happen? So that's certainly something we're looking into, the complexity of it. And as Eileen mentioned, the vendors that her and Paul have talked to have given us a different price for that. The, I guess the place they take it to do prefer without the glass. And they're talking around a $5 difference without the glass than with the glass. And as Reagan mentioned, we could potentially handle the glass on our own at a $35 tipping fee through NRRA. So that, those are the kind of things that we would consider. And, you know, it's not a great magnitude of difference in the budget-wise. But I'm of the belief, anything we can do to keep recycling and making the products viable is something, if we can, we should, so... Another option is we just recycle the items that generate revenue. We could send all the paper and glass to the trash stream and just take the cans, aluminum cans, tin cans, and the plastics. Another option is we could keep the operation the same logistically and hope it's just temporary. And we could move the recycles to the transfer station building ourselves, just so visually it looks the same, but we're really doing option three. So those are just some of the different kind of considerations that we've put forward.
Finley, you had a question?
Yeah, and I'm afraid to ask it because it might be so obviously wrong that I should have known. But glass is a non-pollutant, right? I mean, you crush it up, you put it on the ground, it shouldn't be a big deal, is it? Let me finish my question. And if it's all those things that I think, if we have room in the back 40 where we pile, why would we not, or is the volume just so great that it would be too much?
So our volume isn't really great. Another program that NRRA does with communities, and we've talked to them briefly about it. And as we get into this new world, we're going to explore different things. But one opportunity that might be available is we take our glass and other towns' glass, stockpile it, kind of like our compost model. They pay us. And then NRRA can bring a crusher down once, twice a year, crush it up, make a product out of it. Now, of course, that model only works if there's somebody to buy the product. So that's a complication. But they do that with a couple of communities in town. And Reagan can probably speak to that if she would like.
If there's an extra mic up here, if you want to add any comments about it.
But there's all sorts of things in this new world that we're going to be exploring, and Chris is going to really delve into.
You might have to ask Reagan your question.
Did you want me to talk a little bit about more about the glass programs?
Sure, please.
Right, so there's, as I'd mentioned briefly, we have two different options for managing glass. So both of them involve communities that either have enough volume to store the glass onsite until they have sufficient material to either ship 30 tons of glass to our vendor in Quebec, who is then going to clean it and crush it and send it back to the United States to be made into fiberglass insulation. And the other option would be to, again, either store glass onsite until you have 1,000 tons, which is a fair amount of tonnage. And we can bring in a mobile crushing unit to actually crush the glass. Or you can take your glass to one of our host sites where the glass is combined with other communities' glass and then crushed once as 1,000 tons. So for example, at the Waste Management Turnkey Facility in Rochester, we have a host site there where a number of communities are contributing glass. And when we have enough tonnage, it gets crushed into an aggregate. And then the host site has the option to use that in road and infrastructure projects themselves as a great subbase instead of gravel and sand. Or the host site, if they don't have enough use for it themselves, they can ask the contributing communities to take that material back. So we do have a number of communities in New Hampshire that have used what's called this processed glass aggregate, the crushed glass, in a number of their own municipal projects.
So your question was pretty good, Finley. It was a...
Almost a commodity except for space.
Yeah, so you could throw it on the ground, except that's probably not the right way. But if you throw it underneath a road or something like that as a subbase, then that becomes a viable thing. We're just joking here.
DES would not like the glass just thrown on the ground. They won't allow that. But if you have a plan for it.
We hope they're not listening, but anyway. Okay.
So I just, all I wanted to say was, we gave you a really wide range, obviously, of all the options that there are. Clearly, those, all those decisions are up to you. But I just wanted to make sure that you understand that we don't think each of those options are viable, are equally viable. And in our discussions at least, our own recommendation to you, for what that's worth, is that we would prefer very much to continue with the recycling program, as is, with the understanding and going with this company for a short period of time, that we talked about with the $85 a ton kind of thing. And going with them for a short period of time and kind of waiting out what's going on, maybe a two-year, maybe a three-year contract. Meanwhile, looking at that all-important issue that was just discussed, having to do with glass. So for what that's worth, that's kind of our consensus opinion for a whole bunch of reasons that Kyle has set.
Finley?
I would agree with that recommendation. I think it would be wise for us to do just that. I think a drastic change would go over well. And I think the prices will settle into a position when that happens. And I think also because of the pricing, it's going to be more attractive for business here in America to start doing these things. When it all settles out, to try and get back into it would be a nightmare. And so I'm with the recommendation of Eileen and staff that we choose that option for the time being.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that either. We've already sorted out the glass at our house, just because we don't want the kids to get involved with broken glass and stuff like that or hauling boxes of things that have potential for broken glass mixed into them. So we have a separate bucket for glass anyway. I would think that would be a much easier thing to move to from a modified sort perspective. And one little spot like they had before of a chute that you throw all your glass down would seem like an easy way to do that piece and maybe help out a little bit without going too extreme. Is there anything else you want to add at this point, or does anybody else have? Peter?
Just a couple of things. I mean, I've heard two of my fellow councilors, like town managers made a recommendation. I agree with you, Tom and Finley, in the recommendation of the town. I think at this point, it makes sense. I mean, to help the budget presentation move forward and the DPW director prepare for his presentation, is this something we want to decide tonight? So that we don't want to do that for sure, okay? Huh? I mean, if it's something that we're in agreement on? Go ahead.
I thought we were not making a decision tonight.
Not per se, but we're just expressing opinions. Lon?
I would put a big caution on a quick decision or a decision that even has to do with formulating this coming budget. I think Bonnie can help me out, or not her head in agreement. It is very, very difficult to change people's habits overnight. They're used to doing things a certain way. And they go to the recycling building, they're used to doing things a certain way. So even as simple as saying, either throw your glass in the solid waste windows and not put it in recycling, it's very confusing.
They're not suggesting that.
I thought the recommendation was stay status quo.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So if that's the case, that's why I brought this up, is if it's to stay status quo, and we agree on it. But, you know, if it's the wish of the rest of the council, I'm fine with whatever we do. But I was just thinking, moving forward for the budget presentation, you know? And the only other thing I'd just add real quickly is, if we could get this PowerPoint presentation, Kyle, your presentation in the NRRAs, and put it on our website so that folks can kind of digest it as well.
And label it as a...
You know, put that on there, that'd be great.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments they want to make at this point? Going twice? Unless he feels pressured to.
I don't feel pressured to talk, except I've heard everything. And I got a level of assurance from Reagan and Bonnie tonight that I think it's worth, you know, riding out the storm, so to speak, so...
Okay.
Thank you all.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. So Chris gets off the hook. Now it's Dawn's turn. So that brings us to item three, the Turkey Hill Road-Babusik Lake Road intersection improvement discussion with the Public Works Director and the Deputy Public Works Director, Town Engineer Kyle and Dawn. The town council will be presented with the options for the Turkey Hill Road-Babusik Lake Road intersection. Or with options.
There's always options. It's too low. There we go. Felt like I was sitting on the floor, sorry. Okay, we're here tonight for the Turkey Hill-Babusik Lake Road intersection. I believe Kyle came before you, what, 2012, somewhere in there? It was a while ago.
That was a while ago, yeah.
So we've now gotten, thank you, a couple of options that you need to take a look at and decide which way you would like to go. So this is just an aerial of the area. And I circled the actual intersection that we have today. Babusik Lake Road runs from east to west. And the Turkey Hill comes in from the south and going up towards the center, just to give you an orientation for where you're at. So today's intersection, I did a existing conditions traffic flow. Obviously, we have traffic going east and west on Babusik Lake Road. Fair amount of traffic. I don't have the numbers, the current numbers for those. We also have traffic turning in and out of the Glenwood Lane, which is a smaller amount, but they're still there. And the biggest issue is coming in from Turkey Hill. You, in order to turn or go to the right, go east on Babusik Lake, you have to basically turn your head all the way around to look to the back, which is hard for, you know, some people. And a lot of people don't stop there. They just kind of roll through, which causes some issues. You also have a corner coming from the east, so heading west on Babusik Lake. And you want to make that left-hand turn. You've got a fence and things in the way, so it's difficult to be able to have a good line of sight coming around that corner. So you can't always tell if somebody's traveling east on Babusik Lake. So you can't tell if they're, until you actually come. And some people don't stop through there, they just kind of roll through, which is another issue. So I looked at some of the traffic. The police gave me some of the traffic data. Kyle had in his 2012 presentation, he had the numbers from 2005 to 2012. There were 13 accidents, 10 of which were property damage, and two were personal injury. They did an analysis, and 12 of those were due to driver error, and there was only one due to a weather condition. So I then asked for the 2012 to the 2019. So this was up through December of this year. There were 20 accidents in that timeframe. And 19 were property damage with only one personal injury. And I should note that there were no fatalities at this intersection. So we have a total of 33 accidents, 29 with property damage, and three with injury. There was one school bus that was there, but it was not reported. And so if it's not reported, and they tell you afterward, if they tell the police afterwards, it doesn't go investiga, it's not investigated. So that's the one, there was one other one.
I'm assuming the bus must have been empty then or something.
I would assume, I didn't get into the details.
And got uninvestigated.
And if it didn't make the... So one option is a T-intersection option. And you'll see a red line through the middle of it. And we own that little triangle that, I don't think I can make, I can't make the... We had, when they did the subdivision to the west a number of years ago, We had, when they did the subdivision to the west a number of years ago, we requested that section of land, so that we could do something in that area. So, this is a concept that was done up for a T-intersection. I should note that both of these concepts are probably about thirty percent designed. Neither one will stay in the position that it's at right now, but before we move forward and put a lot more engineering monies into this, we'd kind of like to have a direction to go, because it's, it would be too costly to do, go forward with both of them. So, they both have their issues, but at least this gives you an idea of what you're looking at. Okay, so, I did the turning movements, or traffic flow, through that intersection. We would have three lanes on Babusik Lake Road. So, there would be a through lane going east to west, so going out towards Madeline Bennett and the school out there. There would be a turn lane to make the left-hand turn to get onto Turkey Hill. And then you'd have a third lane going from west to east bound. So, you'd also have a stop sign at that location, so it would be a stop intersection. This isn't going to stop any of the T-bone crashes that's going to occur. You've also got a close proximity of Joppa Road to the west. It just makes the distance that's required with all the guidelines. So, it's close. I mean, could we move the intersection to the east a little bit? Yes, but the more you do that, the worse condition you're going to make under Glenwood. So, we were talking about this earlier today, coming up with some maybe other options that, of working around, but it's, it's going to be very busy in that area, and it's not going to stop the accidents. And they could have a higher injury rate, because they're going to be going at a higher speed, and I'm...
On the Lake Road.
Yes, and coming around the corner, you'll be able to, you can see the intersection a little better once you get around the corner, which means people going through are going to be going faster. And they're not going to be able to have the Joppa Road, I, I have fears with that, so I think that whole area is going to have, you know, potential for more accidents. I did not get accident reports on Joppa Road at all, but I can, if you need to.
There's probably something there.
I'm sure. So, the next option was a roundabout option, which I believe Kyle had talked to you before. Now, it looks a little strange, and again, this is, the problem with this is Glenwood Ave. It's, comes in, and so that's a, it's very hard to get a big enough diameter roundabout going around. If we were to move the roundabout to the Glenwood, which we could, it would only be ninety feet wide, and the trucks and buses might have, and fire trucks would have a little more difficulty. It can be done up there, we could move it up. I also had a concept for one that was a hundred and twenty feet wide, which was, took up a large area. This is a hundred and ten, it fits all the fire trucks, the buses can go around it. Also, you'll note that everybody comes into the roundabout at a ninety at this, in this concept. So, everybody comes in, they're going the same speed, actually, I should, there we go, traffic flow for the roundabout, so I blew that up. So, they're all flowing around, they all would have yield signs coming into it. So, their speeds are not going to be increased, they're going to be going the same speed as they're coming in and starting to go around. The Glenwood has minimal amount of traffic coming in and out on that, but we'd still, this concept still allows for that. So, I went searching for different roundabouts in the area, and actually Concord had a similar situation to what we had, and they have exactly what you're looking at, and it's, it's working for them, because they've actually installed it about ten years ago. So, it, it does, even though it looks a little odd, it, it does work with that Glenwood Ave, you know, right off. And you'll see here, you can see better, that all of the traffic flow comes into the col-, into the roundabout at about a ninety-degree. So...
Is that a, is that a really important factor, the ninety-degree?
No, but it just, it makes everybody equal as they're coming in.
Yeah, but, I don't think I, I don't, I don't see a need to make everybody equal, but unless you tell me there's a real...
And that's your, that's, that's part of your decision, too.
So, I, I would add to that, Don, that, that the feature and the benefits of the roundabout concept are exactly, that is, is sharing, sharing the intersection and, and controlling speeds, and, and giving everybody each leg of the roundabout equal access. When we had done the study on, the preliminary study on Wyer Road, for example, our consultant said, because the, the Wyer Road leg was so disproportionate traffic-wise to the, to Dana Webster legs, that it really wouldn't function well. So, having, having each leg come in similarly aids in, in how it functions. In this case, traffic volume isn't a huge issue, so that component of the roundabout isn't as important. But the other big feature of the roundabout is, as Dawn mentioned, with the T-intersection, you still have the opportunity for T-bone accidents. With roundabouts, it's the geometry that makes it safe. By having that kind of geometry, where it's a ninety-degree entrance, and it forces the cars to, to make that right-hand turn through that triangle island, that's what keeps cars at, at kind of a maximum speed of fifteen miles an hour. So, if you do get those accidents, one, they're going to be side swipes, but two, they're going to be fairly low speed.
Lower speed, yeah.
So, that, that's just kind of the, the basis for the roundabout concept, and the reason why they're shaped the way they are.
Tom?
Peter?
I guess what I'm thinking of with the T-intersection is, and this is, to me, is the biggest issues I see is, I think back to, if you look at a regular school morning, a weekday morning, with the traffic going to work, and the schools and the school buses, coming out of Turkey Hill Road, it backs up every morning. And the, and let's face it, these people aren't coming to complete stops. Most of them, they're doing the slow roll, going through. That T-intersection is great, it's going to force them to stop, and it's going to create a longer backup. And then, on the way home after school, you've got the traffic coming back from school, who now are going to try and make this left-hand turn. And I think, in one man's opinion here, is that when you've got the traffic coming into making the left-hand turns, there's traffic delays then, and there's a risk for accidents with traffic crossing over. I, you know, I look at that, the, I like to call them rotaries.
Thank you.
But, when I look at the rotary, traffic keeps moving. At a slower rate, traffic going to school will move out at a slower rate. Traffic coming back from school or will continue to move at a slower rate, but it won't be as risk, as much of a risk of a crossover. So, I, I like the rotary, I mean, I, I like the rotary idea. I think about Galt Road over by the Manchester Country Club, that area, and I, I cruised that, that, through that intersection before that rotary was there, and then afterwards. And I got to tell you, it's a heck of a lot better, moving very, you know, through that area. Traffic moves very smoothly, there's no backups or anything. So, I mean, I see, these are the pros and cons, I see. And, you know, I guess it's just kind of looking at, at a price here, but I think that in the long run, you're going to have more of a delay and more of a traffic backup, and as you folks just pointed out, traffic's not getting any less. So, that's my opinion, thank you.
So, now, I've made a few, if I can just finish the last couple of slides, and then we can get into questions. For the T-intersection, I've got a cost of about eighty-five thousand. Unfortunately, that didn't have, I think we need more drainage in there, so I bumped that up. So, we're looking at about a hundred thousand for the T-intersection in costs. You're going to have a better line of sight due to the T-intersection, and it's a stop-controlled intersection, so you have to stop. It's not going to be so easy to just kind of keep sliding through. The roundabout, unfortunately, the cost of that is about three times, so we're looking at three-hundred-and-ten thousand. It's traffic calming, it slows the traffic, it improves the site distance in all directions. It's, as Kyle had originally was starting this, he said it was a definitive entry to the town center part. So, I added that in. It's a safer intersection with low-impact trash, crashes. I'm trash, no. I've been listening for hours. And they all enter in the same, same angle. And again, that one, I would probably move around a little bit, same as the T-intersection. So, like I said, they are both about thirty percent is, in the design. So, I have questions, and then I've got a picture with both of them on there, so we don't have to keep flipping back and forth.
Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dawn, if I live on Glenwood Lane, and I want to egress Glenwood Lane onto Babusik Lake Road and travel east, I'm going to have to make a right-hand turn to go into the rotary to wrap around to go east and head towards Town Hall, correct?
With the road, with the rotary?
With the rotary, I'm sorry, with the rotary, yeah.
You, no, you can ma-, uh, yes, you do have to go, because there's an islands.
You put an island in there.
You put an island in, so I just wanted to make sure I end. So, if I'm living Glenwood Lane, my options to go east would be to access Shady Lane through the neighborhood, or to get onto Joppa Road and come through the roundabout to go east.
Can we, if we go back to the...
Go on.
You've al-, you're looking at three, six houses on that section of road, and there are other avenues, because they can go...
Right, I, I'm just asking, just asking a question.
Yes, but you're right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, and, and again, this is your preliminary schematic, it's not a, it's not a final design by any stretch. Finley, you had a question?
I was just going to speak when Dawn has that right there. Joppa Road, from a different direction, it's a nuisance getting onto Babusik Lake Road, but the, the traffic flow, the line of sight going westbound is difficult. The backup of the vehicles on Turkey Hill Road is substantial in the morning. I think that'll all be calmed with the rotary, and the, and with a ninety-degree turn, it will slow it down enough, I suspect, to allow traffic from Turkey Hill to, you know, blend in with the flow much more easily. I did, years ago, was coming out of a basketball game at Nashwood North, and I remember the traffic coming out of the school was difficult, because there was so much flow going eastbound on Broad Street, and, but as I'm thinking of this, it's a, it's, it appears in your diagram right here, that it will slow it enough to allow that traffic to flow, to blend easily.
And I will say, I didn't do the traffic control, our traffic counts on Babusik Lake, but there was one done a little bit further down on Turkey Hill this year, and that, the flows per day were running around five to six thousand cars.
Okay, yeah. So, so that, to me, says that that T-intersection could back up on Turkey Hill dramatically, if the people are flying down the Lake Road, because there's nothing to slow them down anymore. It could be just a constant stream there, and you can't get out. It would make it similar to the Amherst Street-Turkey Hill at the other end, where we have to have an officer there in the morning to allow the traffic to get off Turkey Hill.
With a, with a ninety-degree, you know...
Yeah, with a ninety-degree turn there, where Amherst Street goes at the end of Turkey Hill.
I agree. Because I'll tell you, I was ready to jump on the T-intersection when I first saw this a short while ago, just because of cost, because it's, it is a substantial difference. But, I think it would be a greater benefit for the investment into that intersection.
I'm sorry, Barbara, I didn't mean to jump ahead of you, but...
No, that's okay, no problem. You know, I, I find it interesting that, because I was just reading something, you know, doctor's office about two weeks ago, and they're talking about the fact that the transportation is moving away from roundabout, rotaries, whatever we call them, because a lot of people have no clue what to do with them when they get there. There is a way to maneuver around the rotary, so that you don't get into each other's way as you're doing, as you're traveling around. I grew up on the south, southeastern Massachusetts, which is the beginning of Cape Cod. We have a lot of these on Cape Cod. So, we're taught early on how to maneuver these things. And when I come to New Hampshire, because there are several in, in other towns, they don't know what they're doing, and a lot of times, they do result in accidents. So, I just think that's something to keep in mind, because, like I say, there is a way to maneuver it, and if you don't maneuver it correctly, somebody's trying to go in the other direction. Also, I'm glad you took into account how much room you need to get around that, because not too long ago, it was in the paper, that there was a town that built one of these, and the fire truck got stuck in the middle of it and couldn't get out. So, they had to come and tow the, tow it out. So, I can't, I don't know if it was, where exactly it was, but that's one of the reasons they're moving away from these things. Personally, I like the T, but without the stop sign, I'd put a light there with the blinking yellow left. My thought.
Eileen?
Just, just one real quick thing. This is not a multi-lane kind of configuration that we're talking about in terms of a roundabout. It's a very simplistic roundabout, and the only thing that people need to know, and if we need to put a flashing light up there that, that says it, is if you're in the roundabout, you have the right of way. It's as simple as that. Nothing else really needs to be said, you know?
That's true.
You can have up to five to six cars in the roundabout at one time.
I know, but what I'm saying is, while you're in the roundabout, when you, when you're in the roundabout, you have the right of way.
From somebody else entering the roundabout.
From entering.
Yeah.
That's right. So, it's, it's not that, it's, it's not that complicated, unless you're in London, and there's seven or eight lanes in there, where people really don't know what they're doing.
Well, they go the wrong direction.
And they're going in the wrong direction.
Well, and then you take and put stoplights in the middle of the roundabout, like they had in Ireland, and that's just really amazing, but...
Yeah, and people stop.
Anyway, I, I think with the addition of the, the roundabouts at the airport, and, and things of that nature, we're starting to see more of them around, and people are getting more used to them. But, Peter?
Just, I know you, Kyle and Dawn, you guys said you talked to Concord. Did you guys happen to talk to Bedford and see how that worked out over there by the, their country club there?
I did not. I was looking for intersections that were very similar, had the same issues as we have there.
I mean, and Barbara raises some concerns, and I'm thinking, be interested to see, Bedford made that change, and that's a very busy intersection, with four road, four roads coming into it, to see if they've encountered any problems, if the Bedford police have had any significant accidents there, or, you know, an increase, has it got it better or worse, is basically...
Is this at the west end of the country?
It's off of, yeah, you come up, you come up Wyer Road, uh...
It's Meeting House Road, Meeting House Road in Bedford.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, okay, I, I go through that quite frequently.
Me personally, I think going through that intersection is much easier now.
It's much easier now.
But I'd be curious to see if they had it.
I can certainly check.
Well, and I would imagine the vast majority of this traffic flows through here very consistently, on a daily basis. I mean, how many people show up there that haven't been there at all, or once, once or twice a year, or something? I would think people would learn very quickly how to maneuver that, personally.
Bill?
Thank you. I, I think, a couple of points. First off, Finley makes a good point about Joppa Road, being a resident on Joppa Road, and traveling south, when I'm looking to get onto Babusik Lake Road, or to go, or to go straight through Turkey Hill, my proclivity is always to look right to see what the traffic is doing, then when I look left, I've got like, this, you know, it's like Talladega coming, you know, coming, running east to west on... this, you know, it's like Talladega coming, you know, coming, running east to west on, on Turkey Hill, on, excuse me, Babusak Lake Road. So that's, that's number one. Number two, where I grew up, to get off at Route 93, I grew up with a rotary. I, when I, when I first learned to drive, I, first thing was learning how to drive in a rotary, back when I, when I did, when I did drive as that. I really love this idea. I'm absolutely enthralled with the concept of the roundabout there, because I think, and, and part of it is non-technical, part of it's more geographical, but the definitive entry to the town center, I think is really, I personally think that's a great point. But from the technical and the safety standpoint, slowing traffic down at that stretch of road, I think is gonna allow a better, better ease of traffic from people that are using Joppa Road to get down to Bedford Road to either access the heavy effort or to get on, get onto 101A. So I, you know, my, my personal thoughts, I agree with Finley and Pete. I think the roundabout makes a lot of sense. It really does. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other opinions? Any other thoughts?
You want my?
I'm hearing, yeah, I want your opinion.
All right. Bottom, bottom line is I think we have to go with the rotary. I don't like the money we have to pay for it. But I think in the end, in terms of safety, in terms of flow of traffic, especially it being so close to the town center. Major thoroughfare for schools, that you're really gonna have to be able to plan for that eventuality. And I know Alistair Mills wants me to say the rotary, so. So in his honor, no, but I think it really does. I, I think the money bothers me, but that's, it is what it is. I think the stop is just gonna create the T, it's just gonna create more problems than it is now.
Can you imagine the cost of having somebody there controlling traffic in the morning and the afternoon?
Yeah, and even, I think the accidents would be more that way, to be honest with you. It being so close to Joppa, it really is just gonna be that much more traffic, so.
I guess I'd, I'd hate to see that we invested, we said, all right, let's go with the lower amount of money, invested a hundred thousand, and then we said we'd have to revisit this again.
Yeah, we wouldn't revisit.
We live within.
Well, you say, I, I.
Or higher, higher traffic control. I mean.
But I think there's enough justification is the point.
Any other, any other, I mean, I'm in full agreement. Lon?
Well, since you solicited a comment.
That's right. We were sitting here being quiet.
I'm not here to help engineer or anything, but the roundabout makes the most sense. I understand the expense is different, but we're not building a road for five years. We're not building a building that we're gonna worry about removing in thirty years. And the people thirty years from now, we either like the roundabout or not, but they don't remember that it costs about twice as much as the T section, which is not going to work anyway. Thank you.
One quick question. There's no problems with private properties is enough?
No, it fits.
Okay, this fits there. Great.
That was the first question. It fits the hundred-and-twenty foot, if you wanna go to a even bigger one.
I suspected it was because of that. Okay, thank you.
And there's room to be able to accommodate drainage for, thinking of the MS four, in both of the concepts.
There's no grant money available, is there?
There isn't. It's, the, any money available for intersections, it's exceedingly hard to get. The Department of Transportation, once a year, goes out, does their road safety audit program. That program is how we got the Wire Road intersection into the program, which, although we have to wait some time for it, it will be eighty percent federal-funded. This intersection wouldn't have a chance, just because of the low traffic volumes and, and the fact that it doesn't intersect with a state route.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And I think it's good to point out, Planning Board, I'm imagining, who came up with that, you know, that piece of property off that wedge in order to accommodate this. I was, it's a smart move. Thank you, Nelson. I appreciate that. One less thing to buy.
Well, I, I certainly like the concept of the rotary. I was a little taken aback by the, the drawing you have and the ninety-degree entrances. I understand why you've done them that way. It just seems like the whole thing would flow a lot easier if it was straighter and smoother. The, the person going eastbound that wants to go on Turkey Hill is gonna take a large loop around to get around it and get off towards Turkey Hill. But, and, and if it were, you know, coming in straighter and smoother and maybe moved over a little bit, it would be easier to make that turn into closer to a 180 instead of a 200 or something, two, two-fifty-degree turn, but.
If, if I may, this, this will be kinda, maybe ruffle some feathers, but, you know, one of, one of the big difficulties with, with the roundabout concept here is Glenwood Lane. The council could certainly make the decision to make Glenwood a one-way road, which would ease the geometry of this roundabout tremendously. We didn't wanna make that presumption in, in our initial proposal.
Yeah, but I saw that coming, and I was thinking that maybe we should think of that.
But, but it is a, it is a consideration if, if, if we're thinking about going the roundabout. I mean, the, the geometry here, that, that awkward move from east to west is because of Glenwood.
So.
Kyle, do we end up, at some point, I can imagine we're gonna talk to a Butters?
Yes, certainly.
And see, I mean, you got a lot of folks here just to see what's going on. I mean, you may get pros and cons, but, you know, and, and this is a public hearing, and it's been on the agenda, but chances are, folks aren't gonna wake up to this till it gets out later.
Yeah, so I think process-wise, we wanted to kinda get your feeling first, so we could move forward with a more detailed design. Then we will reach out, we'll probably schedule a meeting with the Planning Board, just to, you know, not necessarily get their buy-in, but to get their comments and feedback, cause, you know, there's a lot of great stuff we get from them. And, and we certainly plan on coming back to you folks with a more developed concept as well. But generally, for these kind of projects, we do hold public information meetings as well, stakeholder kind of meetings. You know, we certainly wanna get fires take on it, the school bus companies take on it. If, if we go with the roundabout, there will be many who have a lot of not, not very nice things to say about us.
Gee, that would be different.
Right, right. So that's just a day in life, right? But, but, but it will take a lot of education and, and training and emphasis on the, the positives to it, and, and the reasons we're doing it, and, and how to get through them, so. And, and of course, the learning curve once it's there. I think we have a clear direction. Yeah, we have, we, yeah, we can move forward with the, developing the roundabout. Roundabout. You guys are killing me.
Kyle, do you guys intend to put this up at all, somewhere on the website, or you guys?
If Dawn doesn't already have it up there, we'll definitely make sure it is.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. The, the difference is primarily geometry. Roundabouts are much smaller.
We can do that another time. Thank you. That brings us to the minutes from December nineteenth.
Mr. Chairman, we have approval for Thursday, December nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, Town Council meeting minutes as presented.
Motion was made by Bill and seconded by Peter. Do we have any additions, corrections, changes, or deletions? I do. I just have to get there far enough. No? On page six, line thirty-one, relative to contract serviced, I think that's services. And down on line forty-four, so the D would just go to an S. On forty-four, Councilor Rothaus stated agreement with being readied to hire as soon as possible. Does that sound appropriate, or would it be better saying prepared to hire as soon as possible? Or ready to hire as soon as possible? I just, the readied sounded wrong. Huh? Ready, ready. Okay. That was all I had. Any other comments? Seeing none, call for a vote on the minutes as modified. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That passes seven-zero-zero. Is that our first vote of the night?
Yes.
Okay. Comments from the press? No. Comments from the public?
Thank you, Rosemary Rung, Twenty-One Ministerial Drive. Regarding the solid waste stream and the recycling, I'd like to suggest that maybe the Town Council appoint an ad hoc communications committee that could start, you know, maybe in a few months or whenever you make the decision, start educating the public, not only about any change that might happen, but also just to reinforce waste reduction. Because not only will it help paying increased tipping fees for recycling, but we pay tipping fees for solid waste anyway. And I think if people, you know, could learn some things that they can adopt and that the town's behind this, of just reducing overall waste. I know in my house, in my household, I'm more conscious about what I buy, and using less bags, using recyclable, you know, reusable bags, but just buying things that, you know, buying an extra-large box of cereal than two smaller boxes. Just simple things like that might add up for our town. And then regarding the rotary, I think it's a brilliant idea. I love it. I think it's an investment. I mean, Nancy, I share your concerns about the cost, but I think what Lon said, ten years, twenty years down the road, we're not gonna be thinking about that. From where I live, I go down Joppa a lot and cross over Babusak Lake. And it is, it's, sometimes you take your life in your hands. And I think people knowing that there's a rotary coming up will slow down. So I think it'll make that intersection safer, cause I bet getting those accident reports will show that there are a lot. And I, I talked to Kyle and Dawn on the way out, because I think an example of what it would be like is the intersection between Main Street and South Main Street in Nashua. Cause my mother lives down there, and I, I go there a lot. And that's three, to me, it seems like it mimics. And the nice thing, since they built that, it serves as a nice entrance to Riviera College. So I like the idea that it's, it's kind of like the introduction to the town center. And I think they could look really beautiful. People put, you know, you could have the garden club put plants in the middle of them. They, they're really attractive. And, and the fact that people don't have to stop and start as much, I think that just makes it more efficient driving when you're not stopping and starting as much, especially like in the winter where you might stop and you might not stop, when you try to. So, anyway, I, I think it's a great idea. I support it a hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you. So anybody else from the public? Seeing none, comments from the council? Nancy?
Well, I just wanna make a point that today is Law Enforcement Appreciation Day.
Is what?
Law Enforcement Appreciation Day.
Okay, sorry. I was hearing lar and there's something.
That was probably my Yankee coming out.
Having just come back from the south, I was having trouble processing that.
I think I put an R in where, R in, where it didn't belong. Anyway, I just wanna be able to make that clear and also tell our law enforcement that this Town Council does appreciate you, and we, you should all know that. So, thank you. Lar.
Thank you. Barbara?
I'd just like to give a status update on three of our scouts from Troop 424 did in fact finish their projects and have made the rank of Eagle Scout. And they are Ethan Burns, and he did the Restore the Chapel in the Grove project. Benjamin Hadded, who built the Gaga ball pit. And Rohan Svenivasen, who did the lighting project at Wasserman Park. Congratulations, guys. You did great work, and thank you for your service in helping out the town. Thank you.
Very good. Anybody else with comments? I just wanted to take, Finley, go ahead.
Just wanted to commend Bill on a job well done last night in your absence, Tom, and you missed it.
Well, thank you very much for filling in for me, Bill. I appreciate it.
It was my pleasure. Thank you.
I was busily sitting on a Southwest flight at the time, so. Which is a whole different story. But anyway, thanks, and, and I wish everybody a Happy New Year. This is our first meeting of, first official council meeting of the year, and my first chance to, to wish you all a Happy New Year. So thank you very much for 2019, and, and we look forward to great things in 2020. And I appreciate working with all of you folks as well. Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Moved to adjourn and seconded by, made by Nancy, seconded by Bill. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passes seven-zero-zero. Thank you very much.